We proposed a truck stop. We have additions to the agenda. Executive session, ten minutes to discuss employee evaluation, city administrator. That's ten minutes. Executive session, five minutes to discuss employee, public work supervisor. And executive session for ten minutes to discuss possible hire, people police. Are there any other additions to the agenda?
Under new business, I want to add counsel and complaints. I've got those two items. And then add that we need to set up a land bank meeting to look at our properties. Because I believe we have the title script.
Correct.
For the deeds. I'd also like to add a ten minute executive session to discuss non like personal matter.
Any more additions?
Do we want to move? Did Alan say whether he's superintendent and then we're all coming? For his deal?
Not a definite, no. I was just advised that they could possibly go. I don't know what time.
I just end up with moving up.
Probably move them back, isn't it?
They may show up at seven.
I mean, the agenda, like, it's not, the agenda is just a...
So we can bound that line?
I mean, it's up to you to follow it.
If they do show up, we can, we can move them up. Okay, whatever business that is. Okay, any other additions to the agenda? Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
A motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Okay. Moving on to citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens tonight who would like to make a comment? Yes, please.
Yes, I'm Jennifer Harrison. And the city sewer line backed up in my basement at 511 North Pearl sometime on Friday, October the 11th. Jamie has explained to me that under ordinance number 962, the city is not responsible for water damages. It also states that the homeowner should install a backflow device to prevent future backups. So it's basically putting me at fault for not having a backflow device. I saw the book that Jamie had with all the city ordinances. Do you think that most of the homeowners know all of those? Have other homeowners had this problem? Does everyone in the city have one of these devices? How often does this happen? What happens if the backflow device doesn't solve the problem and it happens again? And then when is the city going to fix whatever that causes this line to back up? I will get one of these installed, but I would like monetary compensation from the city to have the soil carpet and concrete area in my basement professionally cleaned. The first time this happened was in May of 2017, and I was told it was something had been stuck in the line. I just figured it was a fluke, and odds of it happening again were slim to none. So I don't know. I prefer that you not think of this as paying for damages, but think of it along the lines of inconvenience and labor that I dealt with. Thank you.
Any comments, counsel?
I think that's just something we have dealt with before, Jennifer. You know, you're not probably the first one that has came to the city and wanted compensation for, for a backed up sewer. And I think it's just always been that the city hasn't paid for it. I don't know if there's anything in your homeowner's insurance that covers something like that. I don't know how much got damaged, you know?
I would be hard for me to know whatever, but you're going on. I just figured there was some way that you had insurance that would cover some of this too. So how often does it happen? Does it happen once a month, once a year?
We don't have any kind of...
The, the last record in our sewer book, from what I understand, was, David, correct me if I'm wrong, the beginning, or was it May of 2018?
I think the day was like 215, 218 of eighteen was the first, when we started, you know, taking reports and stuff like that.
It backed up in my house too that day, but it was only upstairs and I was home. I thought it was a Friday the 13th thing occurring because it was pretty crazy.
I think, I think the city guys are probably going to get on more of a routine basis of cleaning sewers from what I've heard, so hopefully it doesn't happen again. I don't know the getting into that, Jennifer, you know? It's a problem, sewers.
Okay. Any other comments? Jennifer, I'm very sorry that this has happened. Unfortunately, with this ordinance, it does cover the city on this. Having experienced some things like this myself and not being compensated for it, while it is a hardship in some aspects, it's, it's just not something that the city can take care of at this time. We can look at it in the future, maybe make some changes, but at this time, we're unable to do something.
Okay.
Okay. Again, I'm sorry about that. Or any other citizens' comments? Okay. Moving on to consent, consent agenda. Approved minutes, regular council meeting, October 1st, 2019. Going to get a motion.
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Appropriation ordinance, number 10-15-19, the amount of $72,852.78 and petty cash of $398.47. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Oh, yeah.
Motion passes. Three, two, two abstains. Okay. Moving on. Greg Wright, priority power management, LLC. Greg?
Hey, thank you, thank you. These are, if you don't mind that it are sideways, you can pass those around. There's a packet for each one, just in case it doesn't come out clear, but I got a, I'll be on the screen here. What, we're going to talk about the day, and Jamie talked to me a little bit about, if we're short of pack, short some information, might have to share a couple of bills, I made copies, and we may not want to discuss everything, I just wanted to have it if, if it comes up and we want to talk about it. But, you know, if you recall, a few months ago, we changed our power supply contract to include a baseload resource. Remember, if you remember, we took the capacity out of it, it's a firm energy supply, and that's what, let me see if this is... That is where we want to talk about, because that's, we've been under that now, and I want to show you how it's working. And also, we had talked about changing our fuel adjustment a little bit, to recover some of the dishes up.
I think it turned off. I'm getting it.
Shut off automatically?
Yeah. We had it up there.
What, what happened is it, it's been under there and it's working exactly like we thought, but we also had some during the last couple of months, there was some ingestion on the utility grid. It wasn't really related to our contract, it was Midwest Energy's system, in which there was a higher demand for power on the western part, western part of the state, and the lower and the eastern caused, caused a distortion of price changes. It happens sometimes, and so those costs are passed through on our non-firm incremental piece, and so we saw those kind of, those kind of cost spikes. So the last couple of bills that we got on wholesale side were higher than we normally see, but it wasn't really related to that contract. So I want to kind of walk through that, because I want to show you, because one of the decisions that we want to do is if we want to make any changes to our, our ordinances to capture that change in capacity payment that we're no longer making. If you remember, this is the load profile for St. John, and this is a 12-month period, so this would be January, and that's December. Obviously, used more, this is every single hour of the year, used more in the summer. And, and so we, we went in there, we've had this resource right here, and I'll go ahead and put it in here, that covers, that we've had this down here, that covered pretty much the majority of our base, call it baseload resource. Obviously, a few months it dips down below, but, but that's, that's what we, we've had for a long time. And we bought a capacity and an energy component of that for, for several years. And then everything above that is considered, I'm calling it non-firm in my discussion, but it's really non-firm pricing. It's firm supply, but it's non-firm pricing. So there's, the city is required to maintain enough capacity, and the capacity would be your power plant or purchase capacity. You need to buy it or own it to cover this peak period right here. They got that, we got that thing. We got to cover this, this total amount right here, so they pick out this, this amount, so you got enough capacity, so you add up the capacity of your power plants and your purchase contract, and it's got to be able to cover that. Now, that doesn't mean you have to run, you just have to have that associated with the city. And you've got that, but you've also had been buying one megawatt here, so your, your plant covered this. And what we decided to do was to not buy capacity for this and cover with your, with your plant. So that's what you're doing. And if you recall, through our discussion, we decided we wanted to keep some. We didn't want to get rid of the whole megawatt. So we kept, we kept half of it. So our, what our profile now looks like is, like that, okay? So now we had to cover with your plant, you have to cover this amount up to here, and this is 500 KW of, I call it paper capacity. Obviously, if the, if the line breaks coming in, that, that's not firm. So what I'm saying is that, that covers your capacity, everything above that. So this is what you're buying, and then we, we're still buying, for capacity wise, but for energy at a firm price, we're still buying that much of it under the fixed pricing structure. So we're paying $24 a megawatt hour for all of that, always. Everything above that, all of this hour, which, you know, is a lot in the summer, not much in here, sometimes none, is, is we buy, Midwest Energy buys it for us on either day head or real-time basis, okay? So that price, that price fluctuates daily and hourly on what that price will be, but this never does, okay? That's always 24. So I wanted to show you because if, if this, your overall is a combined of, your overall is a combined, your overall bill is a combined of the total. So if you guys could pull out this chart, the top chart, I have four charts, I'm going to kind of walk through this with you, so we can all be on, pull on the same page. If you look, you have, you have all these different, you have these other resources here, and I call them like the Midwest Energy, non-firm, and then firm. So if we come here, this, this is how you, how we price it. You have non-firm sales, and it's basically just energy only. That's the piece above that one line. And it, it changes, as you can see, sometimes it's as low as 2.6, 2.4 cents a kilowatt hour for all of that power above the line. But other times, it, it may jump up to, you know, four, we're going to sell 4.9, and it changes throughout the deal. And I've got a graph that shows that. And then the non, the firm, it's called firm sales, this is a firm price. You have the demand charge, and then you have an energy charge. And the energy charge, if you see, has been really low. See, it's a penny or so per kilowatt hour, one and a half cents. So that's a really low price, but we paid this big demand charge as part of our system average, because that's what we've been doing in the past. So you said the energy charge, we like this energy charge, we don't like the demand, but, but it's a combination of the two. You don't see, this stays very fixed, very low, but then you pay this price. So what happened, what we've done is we recently, I'll scroll down, so that was, that was back in eight or nine. And so now here, we brings us up to current, as of right here, if you recall, that demand was $99, $100 during that, and it comes down here, and then right here is where we started this new contract, and it dropped to $17.50. That $17.50 is, this, this went from one megawatt at nine, you know, it, it changes a little bit, but basically $9.82 to half a megawatt at $3.50. So our price dropped from that to that, and our energy charge is right here, the 2.4. It varies just a little bit because of the, the aggregate of how much you actually get, if you're not taking it all, but, but basically, it's 2.4 is the base price, so that's why it stays the same. So our, our number went down to, to this. Now, come over here in our energy price, this is still at non-firm, but what happened was, right these last couple of months, that price spiked up in that above, which, you know, this is the same amount we were, we've been buying, it's just less at, at this particular time. So, so this, if you look at that first chart, in the upper corner, left corner, that shows you the chart of the energy charge, which is the red, and the blue is the capacity payment. That's this number right here. And this is the, the energy charge, as you can see, it dropped down beginning there. And then on the, the right, the top right, that's the aggregate, as the, the red, blue together, purple, that's the same aggregate. So that's what our cost did for this, this piece right here, this firm piece, below the line. Above the line was the green over there, the bottom left was this, basically charting this price. And you can see throughout the time, you generally have spikes during those, those summer amounts. That, the left charge is total dollars, that's your total spend. So one is a combination of price, price increases, but also volume increases, that's why the total dollars. Now, if you go to the right, the right bottom right, that's the, that's the price per unit that we bought, regardless of how many. So if you can see on that, on this one chart down here, that you guys have right here, we saw fairly, you know, we see that fairly big number right here, which is, due to some congestion, we've been in conversation with Midwest Energy, and the price went up. And, and it was partially, they were, they were buying it on real-time, which has generally been lower, but this particular month, it was higher. So perhaps at some point in time, we will relook at that strategy a little bit, if that's not, if that continues. Right now, you just, you know, we do, we've seen those prices, just, that was just probably a perfect storm month, and so it's there. We still saw the, the benefit of going, taking, removing that capacity, going to cheaper capacity. It just coincidentally, that stuff above the line was that amount. And see, it's already come off. This was two bills ago, this is last bill, and then the other one we, for September, we haven't got yet, you should begin it any day. And we're expecting it to be off yet a little bit more further there. So that's what we've got happening here. If you want to look at the bills, the next page, you've got the bills, just so you can see, the stapled, the stapled block, packet of them, is, is these bills, these last four, to see that we, when we've won in there. And you can see that there's a, it's stapled together. They have, and I, but I kind of put an F for firm and a non-firm. Now, again, I don't want to get, it's firm pricing, not supply, so don't. But, but basically, you can see it's got a $24 price, that's what we got, and it, and you have the capacity payment is that $3.50, so that's at the top line of those bills. That's when it started dropping down, and that would be, as, as you can see on that blue line of the chart. So, so basically, it's happened. So what does that mean to, to us if you, or how, how this has been pricing us here is, I went ahead and looked at... If you looked up here, I went ahead and said, the difference on that pricing here is you had, you had the difference if, of what this, this basically $9,800 average, and the $17.50 was this much. And this is what it's been down all those months, since, since that particular time, is $48,000 over the last six months. That's basically, you know, what we're then paying capacity. Now, today, the way it works is that's passed back through your fuel adjustment, and it just automatically is basically, that bill, that total bill goes back, throws through the sewer. So what we talked about at that time was you were going to maybe allocate this cost to additional capacity in your power plant. And if we do that, we just need to modify the fuel adjustment mechanism that would allow that, that piece of it to be retained. So, and then you would earmark it to do that. So what, what I did is I went over to our fuel adjustment, so I can show you how this And you don't have a sheet for this, but basically, this sheet right here shows you, we've been, we've been doing this the whole time, and I went through this with you guys last time, but basically, this is all your different fuel to generate, and this is your, your cost for your wholesale purchase. This is the actual bill that you had, this is how much kilowatt hours combined under that whole, that whole profile, that's combined, the two different, the firm and the non-firm, and that's what that is. And then you add whatever was used, utilized running the plant. Again, you still have to have the capacity, whether it's running or not, but whether, if it's running, then there's costs associated with that. That's all put in this bucket, and that's allocated back out to all of your consumers. And it's basically allocated, I think, and so you go on back in there, and then we just do the average 12-month rolling average, so that's how that works. Essentially, right now, today, it's, this is the wholesale cost total of the whole bundled thing, and these are the last few bills right here that we, that you have in your hand right there. And then the other one that you have that's separate is, is this one right in here, before, this one here, before we started the, the new contract. And that has a capacity charge in it of the $9, or $9.80 that's in there. But that's what you were under all this time. And then, of course, it was lower back during this period, but this is your whole cost. So you, we take your total cost here, and that's that calculation I just showed you, and then we, we figure 3.1 cents is in your rates. So everything above that is what's passed on through an ECA charge. And it, and we, we roll it over 12 months, so that way you don't have, you know, you, these spikes, you don't see a higher, higher number there, averaged out over there, so. So that's what we do. So that's, that's basically how we, we're doing it. And then to do, to do something different with this, if, if you guys still want to do this, I'm, I would like to, I put together this program to take, if I take the total amount, this is that 8,072 that I showed you earlier, 75 times 12, that's the total amount of money that our wholesale power contract went down. That was the whole, that was the difference between what we were buying and what we are buying now. And then so spreading that over to approximate number of kilowatt hours that we're selling, this is the last 12 months, from, from last month previously, the kilowatt hours you bought, and this is what you sold, which means you have a loss factor that you, this, you use for your street lights and, and natural physical heat loss. So, so spreading that over that is about a little, less than a penny a kilowatt hour. So if we take that amount and we said, today, my previous graph I showed you, this is really what it looks like. You're, you're covering this in your bill, 3.1 cents, and then this is everything that goes above that. And I, I would recommend that we change that 3.1 to a number that's just this much less, that .0094, which would change, this, which would change to that 3.1 to 2.16. Okay? So we change the calculation from this, taking your total purchase power minus 3.1, to taking your total purchase minus 2.16. And then that would be, the difference is this, which is that, that amount spread over there, and then that would be, change that calculation. So the calculation that we do, I'll just review it with you. We come over here, and we take all the sum of that, just to see how, how it works. This is the total 12-month average purchases, 12-month average cost, and then you have a, your loss adjustment number, and that comes up with 6.6 cents a kilowatt hour minus 3.1, which leaves 2.96. That's all you do. So what I'm saying, we change this number, which is your base, to the number minus, which is still the 3.1, minus that amount difference on that contract. And then, then you know that that's the amount that you've, you're recovering in your rates, and you allocate for that, and then that goes to the future, I don't know exactly when or how you want to do it, but that would go into the generation pool to fund that. So that would be, that would be the, the mechanism to, to do that. And what it basically entails, if, if you do, if you look at the, the ordinance that I have in there, I've got an ordinance there, that, the actual stapled copy is your existing ordinance. And if you look of the, of the, yeah, same, this one right here, the stapled together. Did you not have it in there? There may have been one packet that didn't have it.
Yeah.
There's two, there's two packets, there's a stapled piece, but that, that basically at the bottom of that stapled one, ordinance number 96.7, is the energy cost adjustment at the bottom, it's 4-435. And that basically, if you read that, it, that formula that's at the bottom of the page there, is basically this formula right here. Taking the total, the 12-month average purchase times loss, divided by the 12-month average volume, which is that, minus the 3.1, the 3.1 is explained on the second page of the stapled thing, stapled, and that's just, that's considered as baseline, base amount put into the, the tariff. What, that, all that would need to be changed is that 3.1 would need to be changed on the unstapled sheet. I put the, just the red line, which would be the new number that we would put in there. And it would simply change this form right here, and then it would calculate that. And then you'd need to count for it internally. So that's, that's what kind of the bring back was for, you know, whenever you guys were ready, after we put this into place, to see what it was, was doing for you. But essentially, that's, that's, you know, what the change has been in the supply, it's going to continue on, and we've got that in there, it's, it's fixed in there, it's going to be the same every month. And that bottom piece won't change, it's pretty much the same, it's the one megawatt. And now, the thing that you guys would be able to do at some point in time, if you recall, you're buying the half megawatt, which is $1,700 a month. If, if at some point you add generation to cover that amount, and I'm not sure, Jeff would know better than I would, exactly where you're at on your, on your coverage, but at some point, you won't need that anymore, so your bill dropped that off, and then that 1,700 then would stay with us if we made another adjustment. If we don't, it just flows back to the consumers through this mechanism. Questions, thoughts?
On this, it's saying .0216.
Right.
Is that right? I thought it was .0296.
It's, uh... 216.
Okay.
Did I say, did I, what do I have?
Well, it has 216 on here.
Oh.
But I thought that other number showed 296. Back over to the left and down.
Oh, that, that, you're, that's, that's...
Right there, yeah.
This one?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good catch, but that, that is actually just last month's fuel adjustment.
Okay.
So, so what that is, that's good, that's, that's just coincidence that they were so close. But this is the number that, the formula crunched out.
Kicked out.
If I, if we, just to give you an example, if, if we did this, then what would be next month, we would put, this number will be, what was my number, .026?
216.
216. That'd go there, and so, see, right now, this is what was put on everybody's bill right there.
Is that 296?
Yeah, 296, so then it would be, um, 39 would be that, or instead of the 296, because that would just basically be the difference. Now, the thing about that is, is again, the, it's basically a zero-sum game to your, to your consumers pre-contract change, because like I said, that, that number dropped down. So had we not done this contract, this is the number it would have been anyway, see, because I wrote, it would have been higher, that wholesale price. The entry number here, right here, would have been, that went in there, would have been $9,000 higher, $9,800 higher, like the old contract, but it was down because of the contract. So basically, I mean, the other option is the same thing, the other option would be to put another line, I haven't put an actual physical number in there, and it's calculated, it's the same thing. But you're right, that's, that's all I was saying, is that we would change that number in the formula... in the formula to be that instead of the 3.1. And again, this does take, this is, this, this formula takes that, that formula on the very bottom of the actual rate here is the averaging of the 12 months. So that's all that's doing, and we're just saying it would average it out over time. So nothing, nothing changes other than this amount is, and so then Jamie would then take this number minus the the number that that it would have been, and then that's the amount that was collected for this project. And then you can, at some point, when you fund the project, then you can just, it can have a sunset period, and you can just go back to the way it was. But that way, it's, 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 I mean, ideally, it would have been done, the best time would have been right at the time we did it, because that's when everybody's bill went down, the same amount, and then it basically goes down, back up, and it's a zero-sum game. You know, that that would have been, that was kind of the the thought, and that's what we kind of came to when I was here last time, but we're down here. Now, it also, with the fact of, like I showed you, we had those two months of high spikes, so probably for your consumers, it was probably best that we were doing it the way we're doing it, but I think right now, it doesn't. But I would, if you don't do anything other than this, then it's just, it's just static within the, within your financial situation, so you need to earmark it, that amount, and so that way you've kept it, you've got the sunset period, and you've got it allocated to that expenditure, if you're still wanting to make that expenditure. Then, like I said, then again, it would be the 1,700, extra 1,700 that we're paying for that half-megawatt is, that's already, that's, that's still in there, and we could pull that out and do the same thing, or just pull it out and just, if we're fine with the the amount we've got, you don't need to do it that time. But when we left, when I left last time, you said, let's look at doing it all, so. So, thoughts, questions? Any other thoughts or questions?
What happens if we sell 20% less vectors?
I mean, regarding just the the future, I mean, for this project, nothing. Okay, because, because this is, this is, uh, this is basically in the, in the, uh, I mean, it's, it's basically taking the amount of money that we're going to pay that, that 1 megawatt, no matter what, so we're not paying that 8,500 at all. So we're not, we're not, regardless of whether we're selling any or not, that number is now 1,700 instead of 9,800.
We're still required to generate the maximum that we did the year before plus 15%.
At time, yeah, that's, that's to be qualified, but I think what you're getting at is, do we have any risk of not recovering enough? Maybe is what you're asking, if we're not having enough, if we don't sell, if we're not selling the volume.
If our volume would decline by 20%, do we have enough margin to pay for the generator?
We're still a year behind.
Let me think, though, let me, that's a good, that's a good, that's a math question here, so I want to think for just a second. You're saving, the city's still going to save what we've saved, so we're saving, the numbers are intact.
Yeah, in a year's time, you're still going to save, you're still going to put...
You're going to save the 9,600.
Right. But over a year's time, I mean, if it's $100,000 and we sell 20% less, you're going to have 20% less revenue.
Revenue. And you're catching, we're collecting, we're collecting this through revenue.
By 20%.
Yeah, we're collecting this through revenue.
You're going to cut it by 20%. So I mean, if we save $100,000 in a year's time, and you're saying we lose, we don't sell 20%.
We save 80,000.
We save 80,000. We put 80,000 towards the project, essentially.
Yeah.
Because it's still built in, and if you sell 20% less, you're not going to collect that 20% savings.
That's a, that's a great, that's a great point, that is a great point. Uh, you're right, if you don't do that, because you're, you're taking this, this number times that, so if this number times a smaller number, it's going to be less revenue that would go in the bank. Now, you would have to, now, I think at that point, if that happens, then we would need to make an adjustment of my calculation right here. The, uh, and and maybe that's something that we need to do, because this figure came from assuming you're going to sell as much as you did. So if you're going to sell less, then we would need to recalculate that, and that number would be, like, for instance, let's just, let's just do it, I think it does it automatically if I've got it all tied together. Let's just say for Grims, that you don't, you didn't sell 1,000, or 100, 1 million third before you saved 800,000.
Instead, instead of a million.
So then that number needs to change. We would need to change that to 0.02, which would then go back and change that number at the far right to, whoops, let's do it. To, this, let me just go back here a little bit. Yeah, okay, see, this number on the far right is what our minus is, so it's getting that Have to do a calculation here, because I've got a negative in here that's that's overcoming that amount, but essentially, it's just going to, we'd have to, I think we'd have to make an adjustment, because, see, it should be a bigger, bigger number instead of the 0.006. I've got something, we're in there, I'm calculating that two different small number, 800,000, oh, 11 million, so it'd be like 8,000.
Yeah, it was 8 million instead of 800,000.
There it is.
That'll help.
Yeah, that helps. Uh, it wasn't designed for that level. We got a hole, we're going to have to redo it if it's a hole. But that would be, we would change our ECA from that, it'd be 0.01889. So we'd have to make that adjustment. And maybe we could check it annually to say, based on previous 12 months, tie it to that number, and that would...
Our generating capacity has to be equal to our previous 12 months, correct?
Plus 15.
Right, plus 15 reserves.
Yeah, we have to have 15% reserve. Right now, we're around at about 470 kilowatts from this year, which would have been from last year, so we're riding pretty close to that 500 that we're buying.
Yeah, it's a good, good decision, have the 500. Because if you remember, we talked about if we underestimated that, then there would be a penalty, which would be back to equating to what, you know, we have to, well, I mean, not really a penalty, but they charge you back, and it's basically at the rate we were being paid, so whatever.
It would be really high next year, too, so this year, because we we peaked pretty high this year, too. If we don't follow the contract, where's the contract, what we were paying?
It doesn't, it doesn't, what they do is they just force it to you, okay? If you don't, if you all of a sudden add up what he can generate, plus the 500 that you're buying, and you're 500 short, then they basically sell you 500 at the $9.80 or whatever the SPP market is. But they told us in advance to make sure, you know, there was no exception, it's not the thing, you know, it's not them doing, it's they, they're required to do it. So, you know, if you're short, I mean, we don't want to be short, because right now, if if it was a situation where we're going to be short, there's a market out there that we could go out there and try to buy to keep from going to this premium backfill thing, so to speak. So you don't want to be short. You know, if your load drops off, then you, then you, you know, your length is, you know, more. If it grows, then you need to either buy or, um, or pay that that premium. See, if you, if you knew you were going to be another 500 short, then we would, we would go ahead and nominate the 1,700, we'd go pay 3,400. We'd pay it at 3,50, because that's the the rate, that we could nominate more, we wanted to keep it as low as possible and cover with our own, but that's where we're at. Like, the other cities on there, there's a couple other cities that had enough to cover there, so they're nominating zero. We wanted to be cautious, which was a great decision, because you're, you know, if we'd done zero, we would have been paying some of that back, but instead, we're not, we're not. So you're just, you're just perfect, but the thought here was, this was a mechanism to, to, you know, utilize your, your, you know, opportunity to to expand your your plant to the point that you're running. I mean, I, you guys have had this, had a conversation probably more than I have, but this was a, this was a funding source, and I'm not sure exactly where the numbers are, but by doing it this way and making the adjustment, that's an excellent point, I think we should put that in there, that we evaluated every year based on your sales, that it needs to be adjusted, that we're recovering based on the previous 12-month sales. So if your sales do drop off, then then you would have to make that adjustment that time. I mean, you haven't changed this number for years, I mean, that 3.1 has been in there for, well, I mean, you know, I've been doing this, I mean, since...
What is our economic downside? Say we come up 500 short.
Nine...
What's that going to cost us if we happen to come up 500 short and we can't generate?
Today, this year, it'd be like $9.80 times 500, so it'd be 4,500, 4,600.
4,500, 4,600.
For a month, yeah.
Per month?
For that, yeah, for that month, full month, yeah. Because then you're going to buy it.
You pay that for the next 12 months.
For 12 months.
The next 12 months, for the next 12 months.
So you're stuck with that 4,500 for the next 12 months.
Right, and and they were pretty, they told us in advance.
They're pretty adamant about that.
And they're not, that's not being like, just doing that, I mean, that's the way it is, and it's not them, it's, it's the, what it is, is every, the reason it is, everybody's required, you got, you know, we're just part of this load in this big, in the big pool, and everybody's required to either own or buy capacity to cover that amount plus their 15% of their reserve. And you, and so as long as everybody's doing that, and if you're not doing it, then the pool's short, if every, all of us are exactly where we're going to be, and you're not, then we're short. So you need to buy or sell, and if you don't do it, then the pool says, okay, well, you're not participating, so I'm going to buy it for you at this off-the-shelf amount, that's, you don't want to do that right now.
Well, the reason is, at Midwest Energy, that's part of their coverage.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're the ones that are really...
They're sticking their neck out, because we're the ones that's telling them we've got enough to cover it.
Yeah.
So they're using our, what we manufacture to help with what they're purchasing.
They're adding it in there, and if we don't, then they get hit with it, then they pass it off.
They're going to pay a penalty, so on top of that, we're going to pay a penalty.
So it's not them just putting the thing, so it's, you don't want to go, you really can't go, um, below, that's just not, that's why, that's why it's kind of high, is because they don't want you to do that, they don't want you to take...
That around calendar year or for the year when we signed up for the...
This, this, this is your fuel adjustment, and it's a 12-month rolling. Okay, so I I change every 12 months, I drop the previous month. So if you look at it, this, this, this is your last few bills, and see, this was the high one that, you know, I showed you, that's that spike there. Well, in 12 months, if if it, if this goes away, then that drops off. Right now, it's, it's in the, in the rates. I mean, you guys have done your, your community a positive service by by rolling that, so they didn't, everybody didn't see that, nobody has really seen that on the deal. And so you guys are really recovering that over the next 12 months in in this fuel adjustment, that's the way it works. So like, you know, August, it dropped off, that last one, these will all drop off every month, you add another one here this September, hopefully it'll be lower, hopefully lower than that one, because every time it dropped, that drops off, it, it overall, it's just the way the math works, it dropped down. So, so, but this has, as I was showing you those bills, it has the energy, it's got the capacity, it's all in there. And then if if all of a sudden, we got, if Jeff couldn't have run, I know he, he had, they tested them, and he had to run, and he hadn't done that, this number would have been, you know, $9,000 higher, you know, or or more, depending on how much he ran it. If he didn't run any, it would have been a lot higher, because you would have had to buy it all, because, and this, it would have been better than here. Instead of, this demand charge at the very top of the bills is $1,700, under the old contract is 9,800. Uh, if we didn't run, it would have been, it would have been way worse than that, because it would have been, uh, all of it, including this, this is just for the 1 megawatt, the base piece. We, it just, you guys have covered your top, but if you didn't cover any of it, it'd be, this would all be a lot higher, and, you know, we'd be buying, and a lot of cities are, cities that don't have generation, that's what they do. That demand charge is really high, and that's what, that's the way, that's the way it is. So you're, you're getting the value of the plant in here when we're doing that. And so, right now, we're all, we're all good, it's just whether or not you guys wanted to use this opportunity, that was the whole thing, we were seeing this favorable contract that's coming to us, that we're able to reduce those capacity charges, and it might, might have been, we thought perhaps was a good time to to look at doing something with your generation.
Can we buy, if we anticipate ahead of time, can we buy this 500 anyplace else out front cheaper than the 9 cents?
Nine, nine and a half dollars.
Nine and a half, yeah. Could you go out, could we independently go out and buy it?
Yes.
And kind of what would that cost?
Well, um, you, again, it's just paper, okay, so you don't really have anything, you know, so it doesn't have the, you know, right now, when you do lose power and whatever, you have the chance to, you actually run this as physical capacity, but if you bought paper, if you didn't do anything, you just bought it through the thing, it'd be the $9.80, but if, like, if you said, hey, Greg, go out and buy it for us, I can go out and buy it today, you know, a, pretty low, I mean, it's, it'd be much lower than 9.80. It, you know, Midwest Energy is is pricing at 3.50, that's what you're doing, you're buying 500 at 3.50. If you buy from them, it's going to be 3.50. Okay, so it'd be 17, uh, like, for instance, for 500, who'd buy another 500, it'd be another 1,700 bucks.
Will they allow that contract to fluctuate like that now?
Well, no, no, not, not, not just will and no, you can buy monthly, month, but I think if we wanted to go out, that we negotiated that, we we haven't approached them to say we wanted to go out and just, you know, change that and go to a meg or anything like that. Um, you know, it all factors in, timing would be everything, but I think at some point in time, we could try to negotiate a higher, higher piece if we wanted to. The thing is, we, we negotiated it down, we went from a meg to to a half meg, for, you know, we haven't approached them, but there's other capacity sources out there, the problem is, nobody goes very long-term on capacity pricing, and it tends to be, you know, somewhat flexible, fluctuation, and it's all based on how much capacity is out there. You know, there's a lot of big base load units like coal plants and stuff in the state that are being decommissioned and and reduced, so, you know, those, uh, and, you know, you have a lot of pressure on renewable resources, which don't really have a lot of capacity with them. So there's, there's a belief that maybe the capacity market may be pushing up, but right now, it's pretty low, you know?
But we also did it with the understanding that if we did put in generation, we could drop that cost monthly, that we could get out of that contract, which otherwise, we would have been stuck with for 10 years.
Right, additional 1,700.
Yeah.
You guys did it, and we told them that there's a chance that we would put some more, and we may want to get rid of it, but whether we can add to it, we didn't ask that question.
Yeah, we just asked about getting out of it. He said, I've never wrote a contract like that, but he said I would.
Yeah.
So...
So, I mean, we could, we could pursue that, but, um, we wanted to, you know, I mean, right now, we, we met our, we met our threshold, you know, we did fine, I think you guys did a, you did a, a pretty good number, it's just a matter of whether or not you guys are comfortable where your power plant is today or not. I, I don't know where you guys sit on that, but, um, you know, you've, you're pretty much perfectly tied in on your, your balance, so there may not be anything you need to do, uh, different, but if you did, if you do want to, this is the opportunity to do this change. If you don't want to do it, then we don't have to, and we're, we're fine moving on with with how we, how we are, and nothing changes, nothing changes from the way it's been the last, you know, three, three months, and we're just, you know, or four months, five, five months, five or six months right here, and we're just like this, you know, we're just continuing on right here and leave it alone, and we're right there, and everybody's, everybody's benefiting from that. You know, it's harder down the road if we don't do it now, to do it much further down if we want to make an adjustment, so. I guess I'll ask you guys, what is the, what is the pulse of the council as far as the power plant? When I was here last time, it was, we were kind of wanting to to look at doing this, are we still in that area, or whether we...
You have some water right issues going on with your...
Uh, familiar with them, yeah, familiar with them, but it's a...
We're a little skeptical on whether we want to spend $700,000.
Gotcha.
And bond it out, and I think that's where Jim was going, if we lost 20%, do we, do we save enough money in a year's time to make that payment on the bond every year?
Gotcha.
And that's kind of why, you know, we wanted to see where the water issue went, because if we lose 20% sales in electricity, and we're paying 80,000 a year, and we can't make that payment, we've got to find that money somewhere.
Yeah, that's a good point, okay, that, that, okay, so that wasn't a hypothetical question you were asking me, that was, that was your...
I'm trying to figure worst-case scenario.
Well, I'll tell you, you would be able to recover that, okay, but what we'd do is, we'd have to make that adjustment, that's not hard, we would do that, but as anything...
It's going to come at the, the citizens.
That's right.
It's going to be a higher, but it's, you're going to tack that money back onto the citizens and raise their utility bill.
Yep.
To make up that deficiency.
Yep.
Of whatever you're...
And it would do it, we could do it, and it, but, but, you know, there's, there's a...
So you would go back and you would change this 0.0216 again?
To, to lower it a little farther, to point to fit the average.
Right.
Yeah, 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 exactly. And so, so you would do that, and then that would be, that's how you, you'd have to do that, to cover that thing. Now, the other thing is, if that scenario happens, you know... Now, the other thing is, if that scenario happens, you know, it's not just the kilowatt hours, it's the total load, so therefore, you know, that whole, that whole.
Right.
Drops down, so then, you know, if that, if that twenty percent number is real, you're gonna lose twenty percent energy and demand. So now you're, where you were right at four hundred, now you're, you're well below that number, and so, you know, what you have would, would cover more easily, so, um...
Easily cover.
How, how realistic is that, at twenty percent, uh, I mean?
That's probably...
Well, we all got the letters in.
You might call the governor. Call the secretary of ag, maybe somebody could tell you.
Okay, well, that's, that's, uh, that's, that's, uh...
Twenty percent, maybe conservative on what will happen to us.
I guess my thing is, is do we go ahead and change it now, and start saving and earmarking?
There you go.
And in a year's time, if it's pushed through, you can always go back in and change this, and put the savings back to the customer. But at least you have a start on saving the money.
Start a plan.
Start a plan.
But put it somewhere where...
But put it, yeah, I mean, you'll have to earmark that somehow for the generator.
And then you can make your generator decision later.
You know, you can wait till...
That's what I was going after the whole last meeting.
Yeah, that makes sense, cause you could know where it was.
But I think you, I think we go ahead and change our ordinance tonight. Start saving that money.
I don't have an objection.
And then, after the first of the year, take a look at, at the, the situation. Reevaluate it, and you know, if we think, you know, if things do go south and it affects us.
Then you've got that money, that you can then allocate back to your consumer, to decide that one, cause then you're, then you probably don't need it, you know.
I mean, at least we'd be headed in the right direction if the water issue gets...
If we earmark that we don't spend it, but we earmark it and put it back and see where we are, you know, six months to eighteen months, and go that way.
Yeah.
At least you're earmarking it, and you're set up to move forward with the power plant if you decide to.
Yeah, I, I, and that's kinda what I thought, I was here tonight to talk about this rate and the structure, whether you guys buy that generator, you can do that, and make those decisions whenever you...
Jeff, are we all wet?
Hmm?
Are we all wet by earmarking and planning and...
No, I think as long as you do it, then you leave it that way, so that you can only spend it for them. The only consolation you put in there that is, if you choose not to, then you put it back, you give it back to the customer.
Yeah, through whatever allocation at that time.
Right.
I don't...
I mean, I would say we would allocate it back the same.
No, that's exactly what I was talking about.
The way this is turned, a six-month look, might be a whole lot safer for everybody involved anyway.
It, it's a fair way, and, you know, with, with the exception, had we done this right at the time, customers would be totally neutral.
Right, right.
And, and, and really, like I said, you did him a favor by, by delaying a little bit, because we went through that, that hiccup, if you will, that went on, so it's better. So now, now, we're coming off of that, I would suggest we, we do that, be vigilant with that, and we watch it over the next few months, six months, or whatever, whatever you guys are comfortable with, to see that fund in there, and we know exactly where it's coming from, and, and at some point, you can make your decision. And I would say, maybe put that, the language that I put in there was that change, but put a language in there that we evaluate every year based on the last twelve-month sales.
I'm good with doing it that way.
I am too.
Need a motion amendment, Jim, that includes that ordinance?
Do I need to renumber the ordinance?
You wouldn't need to number it the way it's... I don't know what's next.
Like my next number?
Hold on a second. This is the old one, though.
Right.
Yeah, all he changed was basically the second page.
Yeah, it's like a page.
That's all that he changed, most of it.
That's the, that's the old part of it, do you have that new one, Ross?
Oh, I don't know.
There's the, basically, that's the new second page of the ordinance.
Oh, yeah, from the three one, yeah. So we don't have the, the drafted ordinance, so, okay, we would probably need to do that, something's...
I'm fine with that, I mean, we can approve the ordinance next meeting if we have to.
Yeah, cause right now, it says two thousand and seven on it.
Yeah, I'd like to see, so new draft and ordinance before we adopt.
But do we add in there that we reevaluate that ordinance every twelve months?
I'd, I'd say, I'd say based on, I'd say we do it at the, on January of the year, based on the previous twelve-month sales, and so we just use, I'll, I'll, I'll put this... I could even, I could even give you that formula to put in there, and say, based on this formula, so it's no, you know, ten years down the road, or five years down the road, or five months, when we don't remember, we'll have exactly what we do. And this, the only thing you have to do is, this number will be based on your actual twelve-month sales. And all we have to do is take that, and we'll go into the spreadsheet.
Right.
We auto add it.
So, so are we good with just having them go ahead and get the ordinance ready for next meeting?
Yeah, that's fine.
I think I, I'm, I'm okay.
Everyone's right up okay with it? Well, it just averages out better when you roll it that way through twelve months.
Yeah, well, I mean, we can, we can...
I mean, we can just copy and paste it, change the number.
Take the formula and language that you put it in, but then if you got, you need to come back, or I can't, but order that, and something like that, fun, so.
I think, I think we're okay with it.
Yeah.
You can have that ready by next meeting.
Yeah, I get it, I get it, plus all my emails and that sort of thing.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, moving on to department heads and community reports, I'm gonna move up, uh, police chief, uh, Chief Adams, uh, do you have something for us, please?
Ah, yes, sir. Um, just real quick, uh, just update on Officer Perez, doing well at the academy. Um, she said thanks, I told her you guys, uh, I told her congratulations, so she said, thank you very much. Hopefully, uh, December twentieth gets here pretty quick. Next thing, I know, uh, is the K-nine guy, and, uh, I'm kind of excited about this, and I think we have an absolute opportunity that, uh, we can't pass up. So, this kinda fell in my lap last Monday night, um, I had the sheriff and undersheriff, Mr. White, principal over there at the, uh, at the high school here, uh, kinda coming for their support of it, but Monday night, or last Monday night, I received a phone call. Um, just being in the K-nine community, uh, for the years that I was and everything, I, I have those connections and, and, um, different people I talk to still and everything, but, uh, we have an opportunity for getting a K-nine unit for the St. John Police Department. Uh, the thing about the K-nine unit is, it's, it's a two-year-old male, um, trained and certified in the drugs, apprehension, tracking, evidence recovery, and, uh, building searches, so it's a full patrol dog. Uh, cost of these dogs run between twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars for a fully-trained K-nine unit. Um, we're going to get this dog donated for free to us, um, if we wanna take the dog. Uh, comes in the other equipment, uh, for the, uh, unit, uh, we would, if approval, um, we would change the Dodge pickup to the K-nine unit. Um, cage for those costs, uh, a couple thousand dollars, up to twenty-three hundred or so. Um, I did talk to a gentleman that we, um, Jake, that puts in cages, I just called him this evening. Uh, they're snowballed, but he said that if we're approved for this, he would do it and have it done by, uh, November sixth, that's when we would take possession of the dog. Um, cage is eighteen hundred dollars, but it's not gonna cost us anything. Um, have a company out of Missouri called, uh, Dogs for Work, they donate to smaller departments, money for, um, starting K-nine units and different things like that, so they're willing to pay that, eighteen hundred. They, they would have paid the twenty-three, that's what I originally have, is a twenty-three hundred dollar cage. Uh, they were gonna pay that, but, you know, now it's gonna be a whole lot cheaper, or a little bit cheaper, so that's not a problem with the eighteen hundred. Uh, heat warning system, those are eight hundred dollars, uh, those heat warning systems are vital to a K-nine unit, they're in the vehicle. Um, they hook into the electrical, so that if the officer's not in the car, say he's on a call, taking a theft report, or, or any other call that he's not in the vehicle and the dog's still in there, if it reaches over a certain temp, you're able to put that temp in yourself of what you wanna do, typically it's eighty-five degrees, um, it will sound the, uh, the lights, or the siren, turn on the lights, it'll roll down the rear windows, let that dog get air, cause there'll be bars on the, on the one window, cause we're gonna, we're looking at a three-quarter cage. Uh, so there'll be bars on the driver's side rear window, so that window can come down, but the dog can't get out, but at least alerts the officer and lets him know that the air conditioning has gone out in the car. Or, in the wintertime, you sit there, you're on a call, and you've had your heater cranked, cause you just got in there, and you're trying to warm it up, and you end up on a call real quick, that heater can just do the same thing to the dog, I mean, you could fry a dog in there by blasting the furnace, so. Those two things will be paid for. Um, donation-wise, um, working with the school, they're interested in it, they're paying, uh, they're paying a company out of Oklahoma, uh, to come up and run the dog through the schools. Um, we can offer a whole lot better service having the dog here, that we can do it at any time, uh, especially if there's a problem, or they suspect something, we can run the dog. That's not a problem, uh, so working with them. Sheriff's Department, uh, I talked with sheriff and the undersheriff on, uh, donations, uh, if they had any funds in there to, uh, to help with the K-nine program. He said they did, I don't know the, I don't know what they're, we haven't worked out the details exactly of what they're, uh, able to give us. Uh, Stafford Schools, waiting on a phone call back, they're, they're interested in it, they said they would donate, just, um, they're waiting to see, uh, what they had. They had a meeting last night, and I was waiting for the superintendent to call me back today, tried calling, but I didn't get anybody yet, so. Maxville, talked to the superintendent there, uh, they're on board, they would like us to come and run the dog once every other month, and just for that, they'll pay, uh, they'll buy the dog food every month for the dog, so we're not gonna be even out any dog food. Bruce Figer, uh, the vet that we have on file for our, uh, for our kennel, talked to him, he's willing to do all the yearly shots, um, the Bartella, uh, everything like that for the dog that they need for your, uh, for your maintenance of the dog, um, he's willing to donate every bit of that, um, for us. Um, I haven't talked to the county attorney yet, um, I'm sure if I, uh, if I could talk to him, maybe I can sell him on, on donating. And the thing I'm looking at is in the future of, uh, not putting in a line, I'm so zeroed out, but that if we, we work on these donations, and we get the donations in, you know, a dog, this dog, he's two years old, uh, particularly for a patrol dog, they'll last you, uh, seven, eight years, um, on a dog, you know, depending on, you know, unless they get hurt or something like that, but that's a rarity, most of the time, we get them for, uh, seven, eight years on a patrol dog. Um, so, just looking at then, the future of the, the K-nine program. I think it'd be a huge asset here, I think, having it in the school, having it around school, and people knowing that we have one in the county is not only gonna benefit St. John, but it's gonna benefit the county. It's an opportunity for us, as a department, to move ahead. Um, you know, we're, we're making the strides to be a lot more professional, we're making the strides to, uh, to do a lot better job, and, uh, and, and do things right up there, I think this is another one. The other part, uh, that I wanted to bring up to counsel on the K-nine is, uh, our applications that we're getting, uh, for full-time, uh, and, and even part-time, or especially full-time is, uh, is very scarce. Everybody's having a problem with getting, um, getting applicants, um, that are decent to come in and come to work. The one thing that we have here, um, you know, our, our pay isn't great, but our pay's decent, um, you know, not gonna complain about the pay, really. Um, housing is hard to find here, um, for a new hire coming in. Um, if you get somebody, say, from, from Russell, and they're interested in it, they gotta move down here and then try and find a house. And if they have a spouse, then a job for them, for their spouse to come here. So if all our incentive is, is a fifteen-dollar-an-hour job to come in, and the spouse has to quit their job, and they move down here just so that person can become an officer, um, we're, we're making it tough. Um, so I don't think, if we don't have any incentives, this is an incentive for the department, but it's also, um, very beneficial for the county. Um, you know, we, there's no dog in the county, we need a dog, I just was like getting here because of a reason that we, you know, we can, we can use that. I would step back and not be the K-nine officer, I would, I would start it out and do it, but I think, uh, I think if we were to be able to post that job tonight as an open, full-time police officer, K-nine officer, I think with a minimum one-year certified experience, um, there's no way I would hire a brand-new officer, um, and teach him how to be a cop, and teach him about K-nine, cause there's a lot to K-nine, um, the laws, and what you can and can't do, it's just, it, it's a very, very tough job to have. So I don't think any, I don't think anybody can handle both, I think it's too much. Um, so I think opening up that, I think, uh, I think by Wednesday of next week, uh, we're getting several. I know when I was in Iraq, uh, before taking this, Pawnee County and Kiowa County both had open K-nine positions, and I was applying from Iraq. Um, because once you're in K-nine, where you really have that desire, you'll go wherever you need to go in order to get, get that position. It's a very small group, um, and it's a, it's a very tight-knit group, so everybody talks. I think for, you know, a twenty-thousand-dollar dog free of charge, um, I think it benefits us all. Um, you know, we, I, I think the presence of the school, knowing that we can go into the school at any time, knowing that we can check the parking lot at any time, um, I think eliminates it. We already have one case this year already out of the high school, um, of a narcotics case, um, so, and we, the information we got is that there's, there's more there, um, I think, you know, I think this is just one more tool for us to use and try and help, um, combat that and, and keep it out of schools, that's, that's my main thing, you're not gonna stop somebody from doing it, you're just gonna limit to where, where you're at and, and everything like that, and if we can keep it, you know, I, I explained, uh, to the undersheriff today, in eighteen years as a dare officer, you know, we spend a lot of time and a lot of money in dare, teaching kids about this, but we have no follow-up. Um, and I think for our community and our department, uh, and where we're going with this department, I think this is an opportunity that we can't pass up, so. Um, the K-nine comes out of, the history on the dog, the K-nine comes out of Signal K-nine, which is out of, uh, Nacogdoches, Texas. Um, Great Bend PD gets their dogs there, and Pawnee County got their dogs there, uh, from this guy. I did do some checking, uh, this week on the company, or yesterday on the company, called a buddy of mine up in Iowa, who was, uh, the, the K-nine guru that we all went to, um, he knows about the company, very reputable company, it's not a, it's not a fly-by-night. They trained a, trained a, uh, pound dog and, and passing it off for that. The problem with the dog was it went to a handler in Oklahoma, the handler did not work with the dog, had it for, I think, a, a month. Um, you know, there's that grace period where the handler and the dog gotta figure each other out, um, you know, what we call our COBs, your change of behavior in a dog, um, can be very subtle, and if a handler doesn't know every single one of that dog's change of behaviors in a, in a situation, um, that sets them up for failure, and, and this guy didn't wanna work. The guy from Nacogdoches came up, fixed the dog, worked with the dog, got the dog back on track, this guy went back to not training with it, not doing anything like that. So, uh, he just took the dog, the department decided, you know what, this isn't the K-nine handler, um, go ahead and come get your dog. He didn't wanna sell the dog, uh, so he was wanting, he was willing to donate it to a department that need, a small department that had low budget, that wanted to start up a K-nine program, so that's how we got it, um, we could take possession of the dog November sixth, he's coming up. We don't even have to go to Texas to get it, he's coming up to Great Bend to train with, uh, Pawnee County and Great Bend PD on their dogs, cause that's where they came from, so he's just gonna bring the dog up with him, so we don't have to go get him. As far as your other costs on it, um, I think it's a hundred and twenty-five, it might went up to a hundred and fifty dollars a year. Uh, that is for the, uh, handler to go to a week, uh, conference, uh, which travels around the state through the Kansas Police Dog Association, that's, that's who we would belong to and certify through. Um, and that's for their week of training and then certification, and that's a certification in all realms, um, for that, so, um, that comes out. Okay, yeah, and that's the thing, uh, too, um, I, you know, I wanna be able to open up, um, you know, if, if citizens are passionate about the advantages of having a dog in the community, um, you know, I'm, I'm sure we can get donated, so. We're not out anything, but we're going to have a huge benefit by having this here. Um, so, I've been on the phone, the, the guy who owns Signal K-nine's a lieutenant down there for their, uh, police department, uh, and runs their K-nine unit, and then he does this on the side of having Signal K-nine, so, uh, he, uh, you know, I've been on the phone with him quite a bit, so. I think it's a good opportunity, um, any questions on the dog, on the train? Training-wise for the officer is about, uh, I, I usually try to do eight hours a week of training, um, so, but that's on your own. As far as, uh, narcotics and stuff for our training, uh, what we do is, uh, like I had to, you gotta get a pharmaceutical license through Kansas, um, we'll have to get a DEA license, they don't cost anything, they're free, and then we can pick up all the narcotics that we need to do our in-house training with through KHP, and we get all that free of charge, so, uh, we just gotta drive to Salina, pick it up, sign for it, we come back, and it's ours. So, it's a lot better than, even though... So it's a lot better than, even though we have to have a DEA certificate, getting the, the narcotics for training through DEA is a nightmare A to get them. Plus this building probably wouldn't suffice. I think you gotta have about Fort Knox, because it's gotta be, uh, in a safe that's bolted to the ground and, you know, a certain, just a bunch of regulations on that, um, K H P. You just sign for it and just make sure it's secure. So our accountability to it is only interdepartmental, um, on that. So once that's done, we destroy it, uh, let K H P know we destroyed it and then we go back up and you typically get a year out of, uh, out of those narcotics and then we'll destroy them and then go back up and just pick up new. So, and all of theirs is seized, um, and tested. They package it up and that's what we get. So we actually get street stuff and that's what your dog trains on, not, um, not anything synthetic, um, or ordered. You know, now other little costs that we'll have, and it's just small little things, you know, magnetic boxes, um, so an officer can train here at, at the department and put it up underneath the patrol car or whatever, you know, and work his dog, um, different stuff like that. So, um, those are all relatively, and that's what I put down in there for the miscellaneous equipment of five hundred dollars is just getting those. So, did you have a question?
Who takes care of it?
The handler will take care of it.
If we don't get a handler, is that you?
I, it will be me. I will start out with the dog. If, if you guys approve it and I can get with Jamie after council tonight and we can post it. If we get a handler, uh, before November sixth, then great. If it's a little bit longer after we do an interviews or whatever, you know, we're getting more in and stuff like that, then I'll take the dog for a while, um, work with the dog. Typical time, if we got it November sixth, I would say certification for that dog will sometime be in probably January. If we don't have a, if we don't have a handler, if we get a handler late, I want to give that handler time, um, because they need another dog. You know, you don't want to set them up and be like, hey, it's your first day with the dog tomorrow. You guys are going to cert. He isn't going to know what he's looking for. So it's just something to work with the dog here. And we can still run it in the school. You know, we can't make a case, um, on it because it won't be certified. But it doesn't mean that the school can't take action or do something, you know, and we can run that dog until it's certified. It's just, um, I wouldn't run them on cars or anything that we legally stop, but if we're going into the school and you're just running it, um, you know, we could, we can work on that aspect, but I would, I would take the dog to begin with. Yeah. November sixth.
Blaine, John, what are the unattended consequences with kids in school on their records, whatever? I, I know that you don't want to ruin some kid's life, but yet we want to keep these things out of the school. So do you, have you seen unattended consequences?
Well, for juveniles, it would have-
I don't think we have any.
For juveniles, they'll have to go through district court. It won't be, uh, it won't be a city court.
There is nothing that a useful court would handle related to the dog, because we don't do any drug stuff either.
Yeah. And that either, yeah, it'll all go through county.
And I have contacted our insurance and he was supposed to call me this afternoon, but I got an email at five thirty that said he'd called more morning. So I was going to look into that as well.
Will you receive benefits with what you, on our C C?
So, um, this case that we had this last week, I would have loved to have had a dog that I could have called right away to, to search the rest of the car. Okay. We, the punishment, the consequences for the kid, we tried to make pretty strict, but to where they're not. They haven't lost hope to graduate. And that's the, is that the consequence you're talking about?
I mean, I'm talking, I'm talking about these consequences for the kids.
So, so I think in the long, long term, our goal would be to have consequences for the kids strict enough, but work with them to where they do have an opportunity to graduate, but make it strict enough to where it's well-known we're not going to put up with in the school. So the short-term consequences may be pretty tough for some kids. Long-term consequences to me is a cleaner school. Uh, we currently have, uh, this company that comes up and they come up randomly out of Oklahoma. I don't even know when they're coming. Mr. Meyer didn't know when they're coming and they, they walk the dogs. We can call them and tell them to come up and five hours later they can be here. But if we suspect something, we can't, we don't have any way right now. And if I, if I suspect something and I'm going to accuse a kid of something and I do the search, I better be right. That's just-
Yeah, there's, there's other, there's, there's different consequences for a child possessing marijuana than a child possessing methamphetamine. A child that's not, but I mean, you want that caught and dealt with substantially different than a child that has. Because there's long-term health and, and, and mental issues associated with some of those types of drugs. And those kinds of drugs are becoming more and more prevalent in rural communities.
Yeah. I understand the pharmacy and I understand the ones in some of the vaping agents, et cetera. But I also know that some of our kids will get busted and have some sort of record that they're going to take part, even as a minor, that when they go to get a teaching certificate or other certificates that will follow them. And that's what I want to, to know about. So everybody knows, because, you know, your kids may not, but mine will.
My problem was, was on this incident that we just had, uh, last week with, uh, with the narcotics, um, case that we got. The, the kid left school, drove around, got high, came back to school, was under the influence and still had it in his vehicle in the parking lot, uh, but he attended and he was forty minutes late back to school. And then he went into the school and he was intoxicated that, or under the influence that even a teacher noticed. And, and that's just the thing that we want to, you know, like I told you before, uh, today, you know, it, it's a simple fact that we're not going to stop it, but don't bring it into the school. We, um, you know, that, I think that's kind of a sacred place. That's what I really want to focus on too. Um, just, not even just for ours, but it'll be a nice benefit for Stafford and Maxville to have, that we can help them out and they're going to help us out. And there'll be a memorandum between us and the sheriff's department, um, and the, uh, Stafford PD. You know, I've, I've just on the phone with them tonight. They're, they're bringing it up to their council on, on helping, if they have any funds of, uh, coming over, because I know we'll be doing that. But as far as the school, you know, if we never catch a, a person one in the school, fantastic. Uh, if it's just the point that us having there and our presence, they're keeping it out.
That's what the dog always was before when I was a handler. It's more of a deterrent than anything.
To answer your question, maybe more-
We never found any in Maxville.
I've screwed up a lot in my life. I don't want one instance of a kid that makes a mistake to end their chances for life.
A lot of those are going to be prosecuted too.
Right.
The officer has discretion, you know, whether he turns in a, an offense report. But then, but then the prosecutor has discretion. What, what happens?
If I catch it at school, our policy requires me to notify law enforcement. What law enforcement does with is totally up to them. So if we have a narcotic, and like in this instance, uh, the kid admitted to me that it was a vape pen and THC gel. He admitted to me that that's what it was. He admitted to me at that point that he, uh, was under the influence of that substance. His mom was there with him. I immediately suspended him for, until I told him later, I had chief come in the next day, test the gel. It tested positive for THC and we proceeded. But, um, if we'd have, if we'd have had a dog to do that search, and, and this was a strange instance because his parents found a pen and gave it to me.
Yeah.
And if the parents hadn't been so cooperative, um, it would have been a situation where I would have been trying to decide if, if, how we were going to search that.
The further history on that, that incident too, though, is this is the second drug charge, um, and the first one being meth. So there's our reoccurrence of, of things that it needs to make sure-
It wasn't his first time in the system.
Yeah.
Well, I-
Right, right.
But also-
He knew better.
Because he was being-
He'd been given those chances.
Because he was being so cooperative, I just had a frank conversation with him. I said, listen, how, uh, how many of our students in this school do you think vape, not THC, but just vape? And he said probably fifty percent in the high school. So then I proceeded to ask him, what's your estimation of students who, who vape THC at least occasionally? And he said twenty percent. Take that for what it's worth. Uh, you know, I'm not saying that those are hard numbers. I'm just saying that it's not one case.
What's the, if you, if you need, if you pull over a car and you, you're suspicious of the driver or the commissioner of car, how long do you guys normally, for, for, if you want a K nine officer, where do they come from and how long do you have to wait?
That, that's, that's part of the issues at times.
So I think-
If it's too long, if it's too long of a wait, you can't-
It was twenty-three minutes was the case they threw out Friday.
The first indicator you have, if you call then and they get there within, say, the first five to ten minutes as you're going through your stop, it's okay. But if you go and drag on, like you say after, I, I would say anything after twenty minutes, you better not even try to do it. Because it'll get them, you're detaining them too long.
Yeah. They, uh, because our, the closest dogs that we have, uh, is Great Bend, um, and then, uh, they- and Pawnee County and then Pratt, but, uh, you know, Pratt's, so your, your first call has to be to your closest dog. It, yeah. You know, and that's, that's not counting, um, you know, depending on where they're at, um, if they're off duty, anything like that, you know, and our response here, even if the officer is off duty and gets a call and goes out, you know, we can still beat that response time. You know, like I said, my average response time, even in the middle of the night is, is six minutes, um, and I'm, I'm out the door and gone. So you gotta figure probably ten minutes to get that, get your dog, get in the car and go. And, uh, and you're going to be, you're going to be there pretty quick. It's going to be a whole lot quicker than anywhere else.
So the issue is whether somebody was detained too long and I forget, I don't do any current defense help anymore, but-
Right.
But the, the issue is whether, uh, there's certainly a time that you can detain them and that you can prosecute.
You can detain them as reasonably long as possible, as long as you can explain why. And that's just the, that's a, a case-by-case basis of the officer. You know, it's just an officer, and that's one reason, like I said, I wouldn't hire a brand-new cop to come in and learn how to be a cop and how to do that. Because they need to learn how to report right first. And if they don't, you know, that's all what it's about is how you articulate stuff in your report, um, is, is how good it is. And if you can't articulate stuff, then it's going to get thrown out. You know, there are certain indicators that, uh, and that's one thing, getting a dog here, um, we would have a county-wide training with all officers in the county. There's just certain, certain criterias that a, that a vehicle stop has to make. And that way, uh, you know, it'd be up to the K nine handler to call that officer, say, what do you got? Yeah, okay. It meets the requirements and we'll go. Uh, we do have a policy for K nine, um, so, you know, I, I didn't publish that in the policy, because we didn't have one at that time, but I do have it written. So, you know, I have that that we can implement, but, you know, officer-wise, there's a lot of legalities. But then again, too, the sheriff's department, um, somebody throws something out on a crime, that's the evidence search. If they're out on a call and somebody throws a gun out in the field, you send a dog out there and that dog will find that gun in that circle irrigation system. Just bottom line, that's what they're, that's what that training is. And they'll start their search pattern. Handler, you walk with them. They go find that article that they threw out, whether it's a gun, whether it's dope, um, whether it's a duffel bag, whatever. They go find it. You know, and then they'll lay down. So there's two types of dogs. There's passive and aggressive. It's very hard to find aggressive dogs because nobody wants them. Um, this dog's a passive dog. So when it locates whatever, whether it's on a sniff or an article search or evidence, it'll sit. You know, and that's, that's the indicator when he's finally on source. You know, they can start bracketing and doing other things.
So much better than aggressive finding because then you don't have to worry about the lawsuits for damaged vehicles when you don't find drugs.
Yeah. No, and they're not-
It, it does happen. They will.
Um, and that's the problem, and that's why nobody gets aggressive dogs anymore, because, uh, what aggressive dog does is either scratch or bites. And that's one thing, like a passive dog, if, if you have, in training a dog, if you have that, then when you start seeing it, you start correcting real quick, because you don't want them to bite at it. For one, if it's narcotics, you don't want that in the dog's mouth, um, because that can kill your dog. And, you know, if you did have to pay twenty grand, uh, you lost twenty thousand dollars real quick sometimes. If not, just really expensive vet bills. So, uh, you know, it, it's a passive dog, so it'll sit, you know, and there's no aggression to it. But I think in a wide variety source of things, I think this is a, is a great opportunity for us to not pass up for free of charge. Yeah, I think it'll benefit us in the long run, um, and I think it'll benefit the department and the county and the city. So I don't think we can go wrong with any of this.
I think that a lot of the benefits outweigh anything else, um, and I'd like to see council, uh, go ahead and make a motion tonight and approve this, since we have overwhelming, uh, support for this animal. So.
So move.
Wait, 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 wait.
I can't make the motion. I, I'm just asking for council to make the motion.
The motion is to go ahead and allow, uh, chief to accept, I guess, in return?
Yes.
Accept the donation and then, or, or we do, we could probably do a separate motion to give him spending authority to make these purchases.
Those purchases are free.
When it third-
Those are, those are donated or under equal-
We still technically have to purchase them though.
I, I move you allow the chief to accept the-
Unless that company is paying for it directly.
And that's something, uh, I, I would say they're going to pay for it. Now, that is something, I don't know, we pay upfront and they reimburse, or if we just get to send the bill to them, because I told them, I'm like, well, I have to wait for council approval. So, you know, well, we were just on email, so tomorrow then I'll be on the, on the phone with them, um, and figure that out. But, but, uh, Valley Center is, uh, my old police dog is retiring in December. They're getting another new dog and that was how their handler is how I got turned on to this company, because that's how they're getting their cage, um, and everything for their new vehicle. It's all getting donated to them.
Do we have to take, pick it up to Missouri?
No, no, no.
Install that.
No. Um, so, oh, so, um, the guy told me, you know, there's snowball, but he can get the cage done by November sixth. And what he's going to do, that's out of Russell. Uh, that's the guy that built the sheriff's quarter cage and, you know, and that's actually the one we were waiting on the cage for the Dodge to come, and I canceled that. Tentatively waiting to see what we've got tonight. But, uh, he's going to come to Great Bend. Uh, he's got a truck there that he can get all the measurements for the entire, uh, three-quarter cage. And then, uh, his wife has family in Great Bend, so he said they got a good shop. He goes, I'll just get it all made and then you can come up and we'll slap it in. Um, and it'll be done.
If there's a problem with this company and something goes wrong, I'll cover the cost of the cage for the vehicle right now.
This guy has been good to us. He's set up our last one, two, three patrol units.
And his quality of work is a lot better than even, you know, I've, I've had a elite K nine cage, um, and it was good. It was nice. But even seeing the pictures of this and then looking at the sheriff's quarter cage, for a lower price, which we're not paying for anyways, but it's a lot more solid cage.
And I've had Ray Allen here before when I, and you pay for, it, you pay for a name is what you pay for. For, for a lot of these bigger companies that have done dogs for years, you're paying for the name and not the quality of work.
Yeah. So that heat warning system, that'll come in. That'll be something that I can install. You know, the, I installed the last one on my patrol car over in my old apartment. Um, those aren't hard to install. It's just got sensors that you zip tie up on the cage, goes into a box that you run into the electrical and then you just gotta put some, um, relays in for the windows and you wire it into your siren box and, uh, and it'll sound everything off and, and take care of that. So that's something we'll put in ourselves. But there again, that eight hundred dollars we're not paying for, that company in Missouri is going to pay for it. So they don't do any work. They're just a company that gets, uh, donations, uh, from businesses and stuff like that, and then they help out, uh, departments with their K nine units. Because I know, uh, they bought a K nine, a whole K nine unit, I think it was, uh, for some other department, because they accidentally sent me that email. And I thought they were going to give me a whole car and a K nine. I was really excited, but it turns out that was a mix-up and I'm just getting a cage. But I was, I was pretty confident at first.
I guess just the motion that set the, the two-year-old, whatever, whatever.
German Shepherd. So we have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Was that to approve?
Except the dog, yes.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries.
What's its name? How would?
I move we allow the chief to use his spending authority for the necessary expenses for the-
Malcolm?
Falcon. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries.
I'd make a motion to let the chief put out as our third officer, uh, the K nine position.
Yes, I got that part. Thank you.
Okay, okay.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you guys. Thank you very much.
Salesman of the month, huh?
And the guy, the guy can sell anything.
Does his homework and take lessons. That's what I-
I just want to point out that Jim-
Problem is our stuff costs way more than that. That's the problem.
I just want to point out-
If you bring a free generator in, I'm, I'm back with you.
Okay, moving on. Okay, we're going to move on to city superintendent, uh, Jeff Williamson.
I don't have anything, guys. I've been on vacation, but I'm, but I'm here anyway.
You do though.
I do?
Oh, kind of.
Okay. What do I have?
Is it Monroe and, is it South, Monroe and South? Monroe and- Monroe and Hooly, however you pronounce that street.
Oh, you're talking about the drainage problem?
Yeah.
Yeah, at, uh, South and Monroe. Uh, for some of you guys that lived here forever, it's where Virgil Metzer used to live, Ty Corwin will live on the corner. Um, every time that it rains heavily, um, the water turns into a swimming pool. Most of you know that, it happens a block north, it happens east of my house, happens several places. We had a lady that was fairly upset about that and wanted something done, but, um, like I've explained to Jamie, and uh, the guys all know it, that water starts draining right here across the street. It goes down to Third, it goes across to over to Prairie, it goes south to South Street. Comes back across over to Nutting at Roger La Chance's, comes a block north and then turns into West Street. It's the last water to drain in town, and it's a fairly good amount of surface water over here, so, we can't stop it. The only way that we could ever stop it, Marshall, I've talked about this, I don't, I think Ryan and I might have this about a time or two. You know, we could go in and cut that line, maybe at, um, uh, Prairie and South, and overflow it to the south. Maybe buy some ground there, or get it to where we could kick it out there and then let it lay there until it could recover and go back when the drainage is right. We've talked about going over to the southwest corner of town and doing the same thing. Um, it's not the size of the pipe, it, it doesn't have anything to do with it, what it has to do with is, is it's, it's racing for the same spot in the mouth of that ditch over there at East and West. So, um, the problem's not gonna stop. Uh, it doesn't happen very often, it only happens when it rains really hard. But like I said, that's not the only corner, this corner here does it, the corner south does it at the WIT Center. Uh, the corner east of me does it deep enough that it's over knee-deep in there. Uh, goes across First Street at, uh, First and, and, uh, Monroe, and it gets, and it gets fairly deep. It has come back in the house on the northeast corner, the intersection several times over the years. And it's down there, and there's no way to stop it. It's just one of them deals you kinda gotta live with.
We wanted to bring it to your attention, cause David and the guys went out and double-checked everything to make sure nothing was.
They wanted to make sure everything was clean, and it was.
When David talked to her on the phone, she basically says this is unacceptable and there needs to be a long-term plan. So, we wanted to bring it to your attention before.
Can we get an anti-gravity device to make water run up?
Boy, if you could, it'd be great, I could use it several places.
We can sell it to Culvera.
Yeah, there you go, and we'll give it to them, we'll give it to them. But there's no, there's no, you know, the town's flat, folks, I mean, um, anybody that's been around here as long as I have knows that when it rains really hard, um, it just, you just have to be patient with it. And, and that's, you know, when it comes out of that, when it comes out of the mouth of that covert there just north of Seventh and West Way, it's rolling six foot deep in that ditch, and, and it goes clear to the creek, and it just takes time. I mean, it's, it's just a deal that you just, I wished it was all built on a hill where it'd run down, but it's not, so.
So we just wanted to bring that to your attention, um, I think the last that David talked to her, we'd get back to her, um.
I would just try to clean them out as much as you can and keep them, keep them as good as what we can.
Yeah, I mean, we keep the street sweeper running and that stuff, so we can keep everything clean, so we don't get any more material in there. We've never had a problem with those draining, I mean, they're just, it, it just gets deep. I mean, we've had signs down there for years, we've put out barricades, but we can't stop it, I mean, we just can't stop it.
Roughly two weeks before she called in, I went down there and popped that manhole there and at Broadway, and that pipe was completely clean. Um, and then, I mean, she called in, so, and I told her, I said, you know, I just got done checking it. There's maybe a quarter inch of stuff in that, bottom of that catch basin.
Yeah.
And it's not even to the pipe, cause pipe's off the, off the bottom about roughly an inch.
It takes a pretty good jog, it has to turn ninety degrees down there at Nutting, then go back a block, and then another block to the west, and, and so it can't drain fast, but it has to weigh on everything else that's up there, so, that's just the way it is.
There's two catch basins right there at, um.
They go into the same thing, this comes in, this comes in right along the south, south curve line, uh, there in front of the old co-op's where it comes through, yeah. All has to go in the same piece of pipe, that's the problem. So, anyway.
Call her back and let her know, uh, what our plan is, what she has.
Just do the best you can to try and keep it as clean as possible, but if you can't do anything about it, you can't do anything about it.
I, yeah, I don't know if getting rid of water is number one priority, right, I mean, not to spend a hundred thousand dollars for it, at the very minimum.
It don't take a hundred to do it.
It would, it would be if you just dumped it out in West Street.
Oh yeah, we could do that.
You could do it for a hundred thousand, but then you're still, you have to.
But we got ninety percent of the pipes already there, so we're gonna have to enlarge the size of the pipe to get rid of it that quick. You know, we'd have to put a, we'd have to put a pond for it to run into and then go back, it just, just not feasible at all, so. Other than that, I really don't have anything, guys, I've been gone, uh, off and on to meetings and then on vacation, but the other two guys got stuff, so, anyway.
Alright, moving on, public activity supervisor, Jason.
Well, one thing I had was Jamie has it, she was gonna put it out there.
It's all, or, I guess it's all business.
Okay, public work supervisor, David.
I think I gave her all my stuff, um, I have called and called and called about that pickup. Um, and he was supposed, I called him at nine something this morning. And he was walking out, he said, when he got back in, he said, well, I gave him Jamie's email, I gave him Jason's email, and then neither one of them got an email yet.
So, we're still working on that. Jamie might have to call tomorrow morning.
Are you talking to his boss, David, I mean, is that the highest guy?
That is the owner.
We, we have, we have a plan if, if what we're doing fails, or an attempt of a plan.
I think if somebody else calls like Jamie, you know, somebody above me, you know, might get something done. You know, maybe he'll get a call back or whoever, um, instead of kinda kicking it around. Cause the main thing is I want it on paper, and that's all I ask, and every time I call, he's just walking out, or he'll call me back, or he'll answer, yeah, I'll get it to you.
Yeah, more than the deal.
I mean, I, like I said, I called at nine something this morning, and it was supposed to be in by noon. And I went on the tractor and stuff and got back, and I asked, texted Jamie and Jason, see if they got an email, and they said no, and it was time to leave. Um, so I will see if Jamie will call in the morning and see if she can do something.
Okay, alright, grant administrator, do we hear anything from Lisa? Nothing, okay, fire chief, not here. Jamie, say you've been through.
The only other thing I have, other than, um, what we put on the report, is, um, that first impressions program that we were working with a couple months ago. I did get an email back, and he emailed the results, um, later this afternoon, I haven't been able to open it and look at it. But to give you guys kind of an idea of what happens next, is a, like, public meeting. And he wanted to go ahead and schedule that, but I requested that I had time to present it to you guys before. Like, I want you guys to be aware of what's gonna be presented to the community before there's just a public meeting, so, um, I should have that available at the next meeting, and I'll present that, and then, um, we'll work on the public meeting. So that's what that will be about, if, if the news about the public meeting does get out, you guys will have the presentation beforehand, so.
Alright, I just wanna tell you, I like this, uh, report, um, on here. Um, I think it's, uh, good for council to receive this, so I'd like to encourage you to continue that.
It's a good start, I'm not satisfied with it yet, it will get better.
I think it answers a lot of questions, uh, regarding old business.
Did the city get any notice on their water wells, or are our water wells all pre seven thousand and something? Because I heard this.
Jason would get them, probably.
How many, how many file numbers do we have?
Of the people I sent to?
No, the water wells.
Our water permit numbers, I heard Gulfstream cut their water cut fifty percent.
Maximal to forty. Buyers took a forty percent cut.
So.
They're already do, they're already doing?
Yeah.
No, that's his, his, his.
Yeah, not in order yet.
It's not in order yet till Culvera asks for the water.
Is that what that meeting is coming up?
It's coming up the twenty-first, and we do it, also dealing with this. I know there's some people on Facebook, I hope that you have talked to people in the school, superintendent, and other people that go to this meeting, as irrigators, because
We've been pushing it pretty hard.
A second grade teacher, first grade teacher's gonna have a lot more stroke than Ross will.
Right.
We need to find out what our, how many file, or permits we have and what their numbers are.
Yeah, because, uh.
We need to be aware of it.
I know we have some that are vested pre nineteen forty-eight.
Yeah.
But, anything that's newer than nineteen fifty-seven probably got cut.
I know.
Somebody should have gotten a letter.
I know of three that are pre that way, but I don't know about this one out here.
What about the one out at the?
Those are transferred from number one, or from number two.
With the same water permit number?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So we may not have anything that is actually gonna get cut.
I don't, I, I don't, I, I can't say, guys, I'll have to look.
Think that if all the farmers are getting letters, we'd already got one as well.
Well, I.
Unless we don't know where it's at.
Unless it got lost in the mail.
Or new wells.
Yeah, I'll have to dig for the permits, you know, I've got file cabinets full of stuff upstairs.
Well, somebody's filing it every, I mean, we're filing it every year, I assume so, right?
Oh yeah, yeah.
You surely have turned in a water use report.
I mean, you're turning in your allocation.
We do, but it doesn't have permit numbers on it, I don't think.
Well, maybe pre, definitely, but I'll have a permit number on even pre nineteen forty-eight. Well, no, pre nineteen forty-eight, they are vested, they are property right.
They would be on here.
They, they give them, they rattle off a number on each one of them, and since I, you know, I.
He has access to that, they're on that deal.
Give you that.
Yeah.
Well, to, to see if you had a water cut.
Yeah.
But as far as getting any letters from them, I haven't seen nothing.
I haven't gotten anything.
Yeah, but you don't know if it was, I mean, that, do you update that information, contact information each year when you follow?
Should be.
It's all, yeah, oh yeah.
Legally, whoever's signing it has to be on there.
Yeah, he signs it.
I'd just be concerned if it's.
His name's on the sheet.
Stuff like that doesn't happen around here.
Yeah, well, that's exactly what my concern is.
No, Jay, Jason's done that since.
That probably needs to come to the top of the pile for things to check into, that's pretty important.
He can pull it pretty quick and show it to you, so.
I'd be interested to know the allocation and all that too, just for, just for my knowledge, I should know that.
I think, uh, the whole council, we should all know about what's going on with that.
I'll get it and, and email it.
Okay.
The meeting is the twenty-first, there are two meetings at?
Three P M and seven.
Three and seven.
Yeah, three and seven.
And, I think it's a good idea for.
Excuse me?
I'm just telling her I can give a copy of that, and she can just, uh, scan it off and let it, I have a copy of it.
Yeah.
Because of the implications to the city and the school, et cetera. If it's cut back at close to fifty percent comes through, it's gonna be quite painful.
And I've talked to a lot of people, there's a lot of people already getting in their letters, it depends on the wells, but some of them are anywhere from twenty-three up to fifty-five percent. That's what's stated in the letters that they've received from the state, so. It varies, some people said they have two wells, one right next to each other, and one gets twenty-three and one gets forty percent cut.
Also on your base use, average usage, and I don't know how tight we run, as, if we're under the same rules of that.
We have.
I know, but that's the problem.
Yeah.
They're using.
Yeah, you're right.
If you don't use your.
Cause that's where we look to transfer part of that off of five, because we have.
Much of mine are all permitted.
Cur, conservatives are actually coming back to bite you. Or con- conservation permits are actually coming back and being more cut, so, that, that, yeah.
Doesn't pay to be nice, I guess, huh?
Figure that out for sure.
We'll get on that tomorrow.
Okay, anything else, Jamie?
Yeah, I just think somehow that we should formulate something, or Jamie should represent the city, and somebody should talk to.
I'll, I'm actually gonna go to both meetings.
I'll take another day of vacation, I'll go up and dig for the permits, for the wells, okay? I've been here every day, what's the difference?
Here's every permit in Stafford County, it's municipal, but they'd have to open them all up.
Well, it's a little easier for you than it is me.
Just a, a few of the, the fun activities, I guess, we'll say, they're having trunk retreat, the thirty-first around the square, I think it's at four-thirty. Um, everyone's welcome, like, businesses can decorate their trunks and, and participate. And then Christmas around the square this year will be December eighth, so we hope.
Hey Jamie, I also know that, uh, Halloween night, they're planning on there being a, um, they don't know if the football game's gonna be in Kinsley or if it's gonna be here. They are gonna have one, but they're thinking that it's gonna be here, so, just so you know, that same night on Halloween night. I was hoping Kinsley, but it's gonna be here, so.
Department of Water Resources is.
But yeah, so you know.
Those are some of the.
W I.
Extra things going on.
Water right information.
We always have room for volunteers if you wanna do something fun.
I know they're in a file cabinet upstairs.
Alright, moving on to old business.
John.
John, oh, pardon me, John.
Sorry, we're talking water rights, um, I don't have anything.
Alright.
Question, why didn't we get this on sales tax in our package?
Oh, that was.
Imp, and what, how does that affect us?
I do have something.
Yeah, it seemed like you had something. In fact, it said John was gonna be talking to us about this in our email.
Sorry, I'm emailing you how to get that, listen. So, at my C L E on Friday, there is, there, several topics, one of the topics discussed was a kind of dispute between the attorney general's office and the Kansas Department of Revenue regarding sales tax collection on uh, small realtors, retailers that sell into Kansas, but, but don't have a presence of. So there's a, the Supreme Court decision a couple of years ago regarding, at, at some point, there's a threshold where a retailer sells enough into Kansas that, that state, or in a state, and that state has the right, or should have the right to collect sales tax. Department of Revenue is taking a position that, that anybody, okay, and can, that sells one thing in Kansas should collect, and we're gonna get sales tax. The, uh, attorney general disagrees, and has said that, that there is a threshold to be achieved, and, and possibly the Department of Revenue can, can figure out what that threshold is by passing rules and regulations. Department of Revenue is taking a position, well, we're not going to, we're just gonna tax everybody. And so what they're warning municipalities is that there is potential for litigation at some point, and the results of that litigation may require, uh, the refund of sales tax collected by the cities against some of these small retailers. I told Jamie, I doubt it's much money, but I just was providing that for purposes of information. I, I don't know how much money you guys get from online sales now, but of those, it's probably a very small number of retailers, uh, would be affected, sales tax transactions in this city. So that was it, it wasn't much of an issue, but.
Love trees, Doug.
I thought she emailed it.
That brings up a great point.
Some of this water written.
And then you complained about not getting an email.
Alright, moving on to old business, um, do we really need to discuss, uh, everything on here? Um, I think the only things that we really need to be discussing is the truck parking and the WIT Center repairs, everything else was outlined in the administrative report. Uh, does anyone in council, in the sewer, um, does anyone have any questions regarding the other things?
Utility truck?
That's what I named the truck.
Well, we just go along all these and say if we have any. West Street, you know.
Anyone have any questions on West Street? Utility truck.
Gonna have an update on that tomorrow after they get the city administrative talk.
Yeah, put it to them.
Okay.
It's gonna be the secretary.
I'm going to, uh, pass over the truck parking, we'll save that one for last, uh. I'm going to, uh, pass over the truck parking, we'll save that one for last, uh, street signs.
Oh, the G M C truck.
The new truck.
And even the name.
New truck.
It's the one we're not gonna get, that's what it is, it's the one we're not gonna get.
All right, street signs.
Any, any idea when those are gonna show up ever?
I gave it there, was that in your?
It's in the administrative report.
Well, did it have an update on when that timeframe was though?
No.
Like, we don't know though.
That's what I'm asking.
No, no timeframe.
They told you.
They're ordered, don't be here, when they get here.
No, he called and they said, um.
Not been given.
I think, I think they said forty-five to sixty days, and I thought that, I sent that to you.
And when he, when he requested an actual timeframe, they did not respond.
So I said, council, I would like a timeframe, guess council would like one, and they said, oh, you're still, still ways out. Forty to sixty days, and I said, that's something I can tell them.
I did not get that.
That's definitely not in there.
I'm just gonna send you that, um, the first one. It might, it might have came through on my phone when I checked it and.
Okay, the note on the strategic plan, the department heads are aware of the expectations, we'll report back in January, it's discussed by council, anybody have any questions for that one? Engine for the power plant.
So we'll cross that one off for a while.
Okay.
The backhoe. Fixed at home.
That cracked piston, David, that, basically they missed that when they rebuilt it, and then they're just sticking us with it, I mean, is that the cut to the bone piece of it?
The only thing I can see is, they didn't put the part on the machine, you know, they couldn't run it. You know, maybe if, if we would have went ahead and took it to them, you know, and they pre, you know, ran everything, you know, maybe they could have seen it then.
But bringing it back. Paid for it anyway.
Yeah.
Bringing it back, you know, we put it on, that's, when he finally noticed, when we took it up there, they noticed that crack.
Yeah.
So we bought the new unit for twenty-three hundred?
Yep, whatever, yeah, whatever that quote was.
Our unit was, uh, yeah, basically our unit wasn't rebuildable and they rebuilt it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sweet.
Nineteen ninety-five, I think it is. Got a little age on it.
Yeah, right, okay.
Okay, sewer lines.
So Jason provided the quote that was in your packet.
The seventeen thousand dollar quote.
Yep.
Yes, and then I don't know if you guys checked your email today, but I sent over what else, when they, when they brought in that one, I reminded them that we needed. Uh, more than one quote, so they spent some time the last couple of days, um, trying to get more, kind of like paper. I printed your paper, people. Um, I wrote off to the side, they didn't add that up, so I just kinda did the, the figures for you on the side there, um. Obviously a lot different. And then the other sheet is all of the places that they tried to contact, I think there was one, the one by Hayes, they never.
C N N?
C N or N C or something.
No, I mean, it was just a couple of days ago and the calls remained, I mean.
There's just not very many guys that do it.
But I mean, we could still be getting quotes in, I mean, if we only gave them a day or two.
You won't get one cheaper, mayors.
No, I mean, that one's significantly a lot cheaper.
These guys do it and they go all over the country, they also line and repair pipe, which is something very few of them do. They have the ability to line up to a forty-eight inch line, so, I mean, they, they've been doing this a lot of years, and they're, and they're close, that's the thing. So, that's what makes them so inexpensive, they don't have any travel time. You know, they're just south of Wichita, they can go home every night if they're here ten days, so, you don't have motels, you don't have food, and you don't have none of that stuff, so. But, and they supply everything, they want to clean the lines before they run the Cambrian. They don't want us to do it, they wanna do it, cause they wanna make sure that they're clean, that way they don't hang a. Twenty thousand dollar camera up in there and can't get it back out.
About a hundred.
Or a hundred and twenty thousand.
What about, isn't there one Hill City yet, or?
There used to be, not anymore.
Not anymore.
No.
A lot of the places used to have like equipment and stuff, and they basically either sold it because municipalities said they were gonna use them. Once they got the equipment, they never used them.
Well, a lot of the larger municipalities have them, you know, great band has one, I mean, but they use it and they use it all the time. So, I mean, the larger places that can afford that type of equipment, they have a crew that that's what they do, you know, so.
What's your plan, I guess, once this is all done, I mean, are you just gonna wait till what we see and then make a plan?
Well, I've started, I've started, I, I did it today, and I got one section done. There's some places I want the guys to pull lids every day, and the lady that was in here is one of them. And, and that's partially my fault, I'm gonna admit to it, we used to check it every day when I was here years ago. And during all this other stuff and taking care of this stuff, I forgot it, I just flat forgot it. And, uh, you know, there were several that we checked daily, and then we had, uh, we, we cordon the town off in quarters. And every Thursday, we would check one quarter, so that that quarter got checked once a month, when you wait around, plus your dailies that you checked. But when these guys get done, um, I think the next, the next thing to do is probably to decide what you wanna do with. Part of this, cause you're gonna see some damage that's fairly bad, you're gonna see some pipes that's come apart. Some cracks that are severe, some pieces that are out of, but. I want to go and, and, and take these. Films against the stuff that I have that's sixteen years old. I've looked at twelve thousand feet of this pipe and I know what kind of shape it's in. And, and I'm sure it hasn't improved over the last twelve years, so. You know, if we're gonna take, if we're gonna start any kind of a maintenance program, Jason's right, what we need to do is, is set this up so that yearly. We contract somebody to come in and camera this stuff, and do one quarter a year. You know, it wouldn't cost you a lot of money to go in and have it professionally done, and, uh. And looked at so that you know what kind of condition your pipe's in, a lot of this pipe's a hundred years old. I mean, and, and the ground settling and that stuff, it's been pretty tough on it, so. You know, it's your call, what you wanna do, but, but, uh, we've got ten thousand feet that need to be done really bad, really bad. We've got one manhole that's gonna take some costly repair, but we need to look at them first, I think, and go from there, so. It's hard to see down in the ground, you know, there's about forty-five thousand feet of pipe, if we spread it out. You know, and do some every year, it wouldn't be that costly.
If we went through with this and decided to have it camered, like how much money do we have to put into ten thousand feet of?
Oh, you have more than enough, more than two hundred some thousand we've got in the fund.
And the sewer replacement fund?
Yeah.
I just don't wanna spend that much money, not, not go forth with something.
And that's the reason that I waited, I was gonna do this in the spring, Jamie and I discussed it with an engineer we've been missing with, because. If we have to go in and line some of this, um, it's gonna be fairly costly. You know, and so, I mean, it's gonna cost twenty-five to thirty dollars a foot, is what it's gonna cost, it'll be about. Nine to twelve thousand dollars a block is about what it'll cost.
So what is it for ten thousand feet?
Oh, it'd be thirty thousand dollars, is what it'd be, thirty thousand, if you had to do all of it, but you don't. You don't, you'll be lucky if you do five percent, you know, but the maintenance on it, the cracks. And that stuff, it just, it just really needs to be looked at, I mean, we have no way of knowing, three hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, I missed a zero, guys, I'm sorry, yeah, it's only money, you know, would have depleted that fund pretty quick. But I, I think it's something that we should get into doing, I mean, you know, like everything else in this. Community, it's getting old, it's starting to fail, we need to keep an eye on it.
Oh yeah.
I mean, it's a whole lot cheaper than an excavator and pipe.
Yeah.
Catch something before it happens, so, anyway, I think it's a great investment, I really do.
So, so when we, if we were to decide to line any of it, would they go back in and camera it when they, when they line it too?
They will tell us exactly how many feet are bad, and you'll be able to see, if you come up and look at it on a camera, you'll know exactly where that spot is. And then you decide how much you wanna repair.
Right, I just.
You make the final call.
We already know that this section is screwed up, we need to.
We don't know that it's screwed up, we know that there's something growing there, or there's something caught in there, but we don't know what it is. It could be something that's been put down in a manhole a long time ago, that's laying in the pipe, we have no way of knowing. It could be, yeah, could be a dog, who knows? But, but what I mean is, it could be something that was dropped in there, it could be a manhole that, that bricks have caved in on it. And it, and it've gone down in the flow line, you know, there's a hundred things it could be, or it could be broke. It could be this, in this case of what happened up here, it's right in line with the school, we've pulled T-shirts, we've heard. Paper towels, we've pulled all kinds of stuff, you can't, ought to imagine the things we pulled out there. So, you know, that's the, that's the first place for it to come back, is that manhole there, and that line goes under the school. So. And that's just one of quite a few, we've got some in the south end of town that are worse than that, so, we've got one that's broken too, we know. You know, I, I'm kinda going by the pipe that was done fifteen years ago, sixteen years ago, and so I think that's a great place to start. We have some places we know we've had problems that we've added into there that we wanna have looked at. Some collapse on the pipe and some settlement, so.
What's a camera cost, I mean, if this is something that we're gonna look at doing?
Hundred and twenty thousand.
Used?
Here's the thing, I, I don't think you jump into something that you don't know anything about.
And we don't, and we don't know anything about, do, these guys do it every day, we don't know anything about it. I mean, you've made us linemen and plumbers and everything else, I mean, you know. You train somebody and then they're gone.
So.
I mean, you laugh about it, but it's true, and you know it's true. So, I've worked with a lot of guys in the last thirty years, a lot of guys.
Yeah.
So.
So you've got ten thousand feet here of pipe on this estimate, correct, if you're reading this correct?
Yeah.
And you, are these the ones that you have outlined on your map to do?
Yes.
The green map.
They're basically what you looked at before.
So you're basically covering the urgent part of our.
The main line, is what it, a lot of it's main line.
Okay.
So.
And so, when he does these, runs these cameras through them, we're getting a pretty idea, good idea where we need to go and fix them at that.
We know, we got some taps hanging in the line, you know, we've got one that goes underneath the garage for half a block, I mean, it's just. They need to be looked at, really. It's a pretty cheap price to pay.
I think this is a pretty reasonable implication from, from what I know about.
These guys are very professional. You know, we go to water school every year, and they run only the best equipment and only the best help, they do it right, they really do.
Does anybody see a problem with accepting this bid and starting?
I don't.
I'd make a motion to accept.
Well, however slow they run the camera, but I mean, you can pick up spots of that stuff, but it'll be a color.
Do you see a problem? I don't know, I just, I just feel like we know there's a problem on some of these sewer lines, and I don't know if having them, clean them and camera them. I mean, I know we need to know where it's at, but.
That's the only way we find out.
They're gonna, they're, we're gonna pay for that whether we tell them to come out and fix it, or whether we tell them to come out and do it. Cause they're gonna put a camera down the hole before they.
They want to know it, and you don't wanna dig, if you don't have to dig a street up, you don't want to, and you don't wanna spend, you don't wanna spend thirty dollars a foot unnecessarily if you don't have to.
It, say you got thirty feet in one section that needs repaired, can they just go in and repair that thirty feet, or do they have to do everything leading up to that thirty feet?
They can spot repair anything you want. Doesn't make it whether it's three foot or it's three hundred.
Maybe out of ten thousand feet, we only have a thousand or fifteen hundred or three thousand feet that needs repaired.
You won't have that much, I don't think, I don't think you'll have that much, I think you'll have several hundred, I really do.
So we just got one bid, right?
We got two bids.
Two, the forty-four thousand and then the seventeen thousand.
Those are, those are listener bids. What other ones in the email, forty-four thousand?
We got about fifteen emails.
It came from a company in Kansas.
Hey, you guys want an update, so you got it.
I'm not.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not willing to spend forty.
We know that a pipe's broke.
I don't mind spending seventeen, no.
We got one that's broke completely too, yeah.
You said, I think you were starting a.
I feel a little bit, but I think we should just try to routine main, maintenance, the sewer lines, I don't think it's gonna get us a long ways. I think that's somewhere where we fell behind.
The ones that like run under the buildings, like under the school and stuff, I'd hate for it to just collapse one day. And then we're really being deep.
Are we going to routinely maintenance these if we don't know where to go? Go.
Pulling a manhole cover up, I'm looking, I think there's a little bit of a maintenance, do you check the oil when you pick up, or you just get changed every five thousand miles?
Their sewer lines every year, every single one of them.
And we run part of them when they're done, cause they can't run them.
So, like, just my opinion, you guys can vote on, you know, I, I stand.
You say you're gonna.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept a quote from.
Mayor Specialty.
Still.
From Nick Mosley for the cleaning. Okay, we'll accept the, I'll make a motion to accept a quote from Mayor Specialty Services for a total of seventeen thousand one hundred ninety.
Motion on the table, do I have a second? Second. Motion on the second, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving up, back up to, uh, truck parking. Anybody have any discussion on that?
I guess I was running the numbers somewhere, basically it was. boarding, to your math over there, it was fourteen hundred cubic yards if you were to do it in concrete, so I was just transferring it over. One yard is, is a hundred and fifty pounds, so I took a hundred and fifty pounds times fourteen hundred, was two hundred and ten thousand pounds. Divided by two thousand, so to get a tonnage, and I had it written down, so.
Say that again, how was the total?
Two.
Two hundred and ten thousand?
It's a hundred and five.
Five tons?
Two, two hundred and, yeah, a hundred and five tons, so what can I?
That's four truckloads.
Uh, you can't cover, you can't cover three acres with two truckloads.
Right.
Of rock.
No.
It's a hundred and twenty some thousand per feet of three acres.
You said it was fourteen hundred cubic yards, so it's fourteen hundred times a hundred.
Yeah, cubic yards.
I don't think you can figure cubic yards, it all depends on the density of your rock, the size of your rock, and I don't think that. I don't think it's gonna be somewhere close, but maybe.
I don't think you can put, it'd take you twenty truckloads bare minimum.
I bet you twenty would go a long ways, I really do, I bet you it would go a long ways, if you bought that big rock.
So Jim, you weren't there, but we looked at the.
I looked at it earlier.
But we, we actually kinda talked and decided that we needed to go about another hundred feet to the west.
Okay.
Which makes it roughly three hundred feet by four hundred feet. Square out there, and so we were trying to figure out how much of like the big three and four inch rock we would need to put in there. So now you can do the math and figure it out for us and tell us.
Thirty thousand won't cover.
Dollars?
What was the length and width again?
I think it'll cost you thirty to fifty thousand to make it where you were going to take a truck out there fully loaded and wet.
Yeah, I don't know, I just don't think so, but maybe not, maybe so.
Cause you're, you're going, you're gonna have to do superficial dirt work to get it crowned. And if you get Fishers or anybody to do that, you're gonna spend ten there bare minimum. Probably twenty.
Talk with someone that does it for a living every day.
Talk to Fishers.
Yep, that's a.
Yeah.
I think they're gonna go over there and shoot that with a transit, and I think we're gonna be delightfully surprised with our elevation.
Yeah.
Oh, I think so, yeah, I think.
I don't, the best, the best part about.
You have to remember, that's only half of it though, cause you gotta do the road, you know, you're gonna have to do the road too, so.
Yeah.
Several hundred feet there.
It's gonna take a lot of rock before you're gonna put a loaded truck on it.
Yeah.
It's gonna take a lot to put a bottom in it.
I think it'd be easier and cheaper to just ban loaded trucks for our city streets.
I, I get that, but you also have to be a little bit friendly about it and give them a place that possibly they could park or somewhere else.
I think, I think you're biting off a pretty big chunk of money.
Right.
I'm not, I think you're just banning future.
I think you're just banning future trucks from city streets.
I don't mind driving them, but.
If there's any kind of uh grants on any kind of, anything that pertains to that.
Ross, what would you, what would it take you to get you to park your trucks out there?
That big rock will go a hundred times farther than you think.
I bought a lot of it.
That, I've put it all around my sheds in five loads and I can do all the aprons and all the front and I've never made, I've never put another load in in ten years. It's unbelievable how it packs in and holds. You, no, nobody around buys rock that's the size of your fist and that's what it needs.
That's just where you begin. After you get the crown where the water gets away.
And I just, and also you spread it thin, you don't try to make it thick right away, you spread it thin and let them pack it in and then add to and come to you. But it's an investment, you, you, we can't have it both ways, we can't complain that they're gonna ruin our streets and they're gonna ruin our things and they're not gonna spend. We just, we just voted on a seventeen thousand dollar camera job that we're gonna look at our sewers, but then we don't wanna buy any rock that's gonna get every loaded truck off the street. Can't have it both ways, it's all perspective. I mean, that's just my opinion. Thirty to fifty thousand dollars on a truck lot that gets every loaded truck out of town forever is peanuts.
I think it's more money than that.
Yeah, well, maybe it is.
I think you could do it between thirty to fifty.
But it's gonna have to take some maintenance.
I think you need to get Fishers or somebody that's.
How much of that project can we do too? Like it, I think in the, if we put Marshall in charge to go talk, talk with Chad and just basically tell him what's it gonna cost to do the dirt leveling and to haul in rock and do we spread it, they spread it?
I would get a bid straight out of Florence if it was me, get a big company, that's enough loads, you need a big company and they'll get, cut you a break. That they'll haul you out, they got ten trucks and they'll bring it in two days, you know, that's my opinion. I'd just dump it all around, but Chad could, Chad could put that crown on with his level old, it's pumped through his hydraulics, I I think that would be, I bet you he could do that in one day, wouldn't surprise me two days.
So let, let, let Chad put out the dirt work.
And then I would get a bid on the rock, you just gotta start somewhere, you know, this, this is the way I say is you just, you buy you buy, you get a bid on twenty loads and start in.
I think it'd take, it'd take twenty to start.
Only if you, that company comes down, don't you think they'd know, just let them know they.
Yeah, they'll have an idea, that's right, they'll, they'll just give you, I bet you if you call them and tell them, they'll just give you a uh, when you're trying to do the cubic yard, they're just gonna tell you, they'll tell you a square footage. And they're gonna round it up, cause they're gonna cover their tail and make it thicker, because everybody does.
Butler County has white rock which is harder than Florence. Or gray rock sometimes. It's much harder than break, than breakout, stuff from Florence and powder out.
I don't, we're at that big three in Florence. That stuff he's got, I, I can tell you I worked on it enough fixing tires and it don't, it don't look like it's broke down either.
That line's still rough.
But I'm telling you, when you get the bigger stuff, it's unbelievable. We did it for years and we were buying the normal rock every week. That's what I was teasing everybody that we should have been telling Marshall we should have put on West Street and then we won't be adding any rock. You'll think it's too big to begin with, but.
It does disappear.
So what do you do then, go ahead and get quotes, you guys think?
Yeah, I, I think that Kansas dirt quote would be ridiculously easy, they'll run out there and shoot a transit on it. Tell them what, whoever wants to relay the message, what we want and then uh, I could help, I could help on getting a bid.
City administrator's job.
Do you understand what we want?
I'm getting there, hang on. So you want me to reach out to Lisa as well?
Yeah, I don't care, I, I don't care, even Epo Devo, they got advice.
And I guess while that's getting. You've already rent, priced your primary to go from fifth?
Four thousand bucks. Within a few dollars. To go to the southeast corner. Right next to the fence, that's where I went to, because everything after that we would want secondary, we don't want any more primary in there.
And what do you have in mind for?
Pedestals? I guess, if, if you figure out how you want the trucks to set, how you kinda want them to park them, we can figure out the pedestals. Cause that'll all have to be done when the dirt works done.
I think we talked, the trucks parked facing east-west and twenty foot stalls.
Do you put them, do you put them a hundred feet off the fence, do you put them eighty feet off the fence?
We had a hundred and then we have a hundred for a truck and then another hundred in front of it.
I don't know how that works when those guys run cords in front of each other.
I don't either.
I don't know either.
If you're gonna put any kind of, whether you put concrete or you put uh three by twelves or what you put, if they're gonna dolly a trailer down, you know? You kinda need some kinda conformity on what you wanna do.
I don't know, is that our obligation to give them place to dolly down?
They're going to.
If they're empty, it won't be a problem. But I just don't know if that's our obligation.
Seen a bull rack dolly down two blocks or a half block and a half from me, I mean, you know?
There's businesses in town that dolly down to go put, work on their truck too.
We've all seen, seen loaded trucks dolly down.
Should we give them a way to do that where they don't lose one in there? I mean, I don't, it'd be hard enough, they probably wouldn't.
I don't know.
But if you pick, if you drop one down loaded, that's your fault, you know?
Three foot wide, three foot deep. But that'll cost a lot of money. That I don't know, I don't know if we're obligated to do that or not, I really don't.
Just try and figure out some kinda uniformity where we wanna put pedestals and give them a plug and call it good.
That's what I say, that's right.
Some lights on the corners out there maybe, you know?
So Jeff, you wanna get up that price to all the electrical, the pedestals and stuff?
I'm gonna give you a guess, because I don't know, you know, ten trucks, twenty trucks, I don't know.
I say three.
About a hundred and twenty-five bucks for the, for the box, I'll tell you that much.
That's gonna be the least expensive of the whole deal.
The wire's gonna be a buck and a half to two bucks a foot. It's gonna have to be terminated and daisy chained through there to feed all the boxes, you know? I mean, you can do it with, you can do it with one odd or two odd aluminum wire, which would be heavy enough. Gives it any one time, you probably won't have thirty percent unplugged in. But they'll still need to be heavy enough to carry it, but.
Going to want to design your layout and run your electric before you start putting rock on it?
Yeah, I, I kinda need to know what you got in mind, you know, whether you wanna give them a hundred foot over here, make them park here, you know?
You run a lot more trucks than I'm around, Ross.
Yeah, we already kinda talked about it, uh, four hundred feet by three hundred feet. And if we turn in and, and face them back east, which I just think makes good sense. Um, I was telling those guys, you know, a truck seventy feet and if you're three hundred foot wide, crowd them thirty four foot to the east. Give them more room to get straight and then that's where you can, you, you can just set your, we can just set our pedestal line right there, we'll just go out and mark it off.
Every other one so they can pull up so they don't snag one square enough to back up.
I, yeah, and I think you should do less if they um, if they gotta run a cord.
For a pair, I mean, if we do a pair and leave two open?
Say five, but yeah, a lot, I mean.
I mean, that'd give you twenty or thirty feet between them where you could swing up and back up, you know, kinda get but if there's one truck in there, it's gotta cut it down, I mean, anything you do. Is it right, I don't know. I do line work, I don't do truck parking, so I don't know. But I think we gotta get it far enough to the east that they don't tear them up. Then they'll just have to pull up to them and have room so that they can swing out. I'm guessing about halfway through the middle of it, it'd be pretty close.
Yeah, I think crowded to the east.
Yeah, go to the east a little bit.
You can do it on a hundred, hundred, three hundred foot intervals. And I'd say you could do it at two hundred foot from the west side, that's what I would say, just from my math.
I'd say that'd be close.
That gives you a hundred foot to go straight and turn out, cause you're already parked straight. It gives you two hundred foot to get straight and park.
We'll see.
Well, one of us will have to meet out there with them or. Yeah, we'll take care of it, that'll be fine.
Oh my god.
She wasn't even out there, how? Yeah, that'll be fine.
Okay, we've gone to wit center repairs.
So quite a significant difference in the bids?
Yeah, I don't, I still don't think we're comparing apples to apples.
Obviously.
So basically like this isn't very bad, like, cause mine's like significantly cheaper, but like mine's just running just the, the the standard grade commercial carpet on his, I called him and talked to him about it, it is fire retardant due to code, I guess he says it, it'll basically fall back on him if he doesn't put that on there, I didn't know that. I mean, it's just it's not apples to apples here.
Are you gonna, are you gonna redo your bid?
And this is the things, I mean, me and Ben get along good enough. I think he, then this is all on council, he said whether they wanna put down fire retardant carpet. Basically this is more of a, gives you more time to get out, it doesn't catch on fire as fast. He said he's willing to go down to the regular commercial grade. If council's okay with signing the waivers, that it won't fall back on him if it catches fire. So what I'm saying is either give me the chance to go ahead and bid fire retardant material or give him the opportunity to go down and save money.
I, here's my issue, I had talked to Isai about this. I told him that we needed to bring it to the table because now that the bids are public. I don't believe that they should be able to be changed just because of the situation.
Well, if he goes in and changes the cost of carpet only and nothing else, that's. But once he's seen the other one, it's pretty much probably a conflict of interest altogether, I guess, to be honest.
Uh, say you drop to six thousand, drop it down to, you know, whatever it was.
You know, he did make the bid to polish the carpet the front instead of carpeting it.
Well, that's carpet on the, that's carpet on the walls and that's where um, the way he explained it to me was when you're putting the, the carpet on the walls.
Clean goes left, that's why you want a fire retardant.
Marshall, you're the fire marshal. Don't do building code.
With his bid though. No, more than it costs to go with polished floor, it's dumb not to go with polished floor, it's just the cost of maintaining that's significantly cheaper than carpet. I mean, it's just a no brainer in that aspect. But like, it's what I'm saying is this, this is just isn't right to bend to, for me to have my bid, way different material than he's doing. But I'm also not open to getting other bids either.
What's his timeframe, we were gonna ask him when he can do it?
I didn't write that down, did I? I'll get back to you tomorrow on that one. I'll have to find him my note.
What was the total on bins if we just went with carpet?
So if you went with carpet, to complete all of the options with the carpet equals out to thirty thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars. The total with all of the options with the polished floor is thirty thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. And then I put in there to leave the rec office out of those options. It's gonna be with carpet twenty-seven nine eighty-eight or polished concrete of twenty-eight six sixty-two.
So let me ask you guys, where are you getting the money from? Because there's only about fourteen thousand in the wit center fund.
Rec center don't pay for it.
Have we talked to him at all?
I mean, the last, the last we spoke to um, they had said that they would, but I have not reached out. Until we have made a decision.
Try to make a decision till we know what they're willing to kick in.
I think you guys will find out that they aren't willing to kick in anything.
They'll probably
They paying their rent and their two utility bills now?
I just looked at the utility bill today, so we'll see, those were due today.
For both, or well, I guess, one utility and rent, they've been paying rent?
I'm gonna ask Dan about the, the bill. When I looked earlier today, it wasn't paid, so, just, just.
That the first one?
Wanna make sure that everything's.
I just don't think we are financially able to spend thirty thousand dollars without a commitment from somebody else. I'm not saying the work doesn't need to be done, my other suggestion is, is
I don't have a problem with putting that much into it, I just. Where it comes from, you know, we do, you know, we do have the one percent sales tax, we're, you know, maybe could or couldn't, you know, but we're standing right now, we've, we could right now pay off three years in advance on that fifty thousand per year. And we just paid fifty thousand, that would pump us back to a hundred and fifty thousand that we have in there. It's still coming in pretty good, you know, we're bringing in still ten thousand and you add another twenty-five hundred, twenty-three, four, four hundred, what the grocery store is, twelve thousand a month, so, you know.
And remember that, like, that we've allowed that fund to grow and if, if something were to happen with the water and heaven forbid something happened to the grocery store and it not. Then that obligation, the fifty thousand is not there anymore, right? That's the way I understand it though, right? I mean, if they're not open, we don't.
We only have to give, if we only bring in forty thousand dollars.
They only get.
They only get forty thousand of sales tax money. The grocery store, correct?
Oh, okay. So, so the.
The agreement is, is if we pay them fifty thousand, we agreed on fifty thousand, but if we only bring in forty.
And really it's just a good faith agreement anyways.
We don't know them anything. Correct?
Right, but you, you can make a decision on an annual basis. Whether you give them anything, period.
You know, I hate to rob from that one percent sales tax, but you know, the wit center is something that is not necessarily funded very well, it's not like we've used it all over fun, it's just.
We got lucky to have that building the way we got.
It's a great thing.
It's our job to keep it.
Where's the five hundred and one rent going?
Here's, here's the thing, and I'll throw it out to you guys, maybe this'll work, maybe it won't, I know Isai's bid says it's good for sixty days. I don't know what Ben's bid's good for. Does council want to wait sixty days, let the bid expire? Put together how we want it done. We already know, and then put it out for bid to our specifications, we want the carpet around the walls in the skating rink, we want, whether we want carpet or whether we wanna spend the money on polished floors. Give the contractors and put it back out for bid and give everybody comparing apples to apples instead of apples to oranges.
I think that's a great idea.
Let the bids, let the bids run out and Isai can rebid it, Ben can rebid it, under the stipulations that we're all bidding fire retardant carpet, we're all bidding the same stuff.
New doors on the south.
Doors, you know, because he was gonna reuse the door, Ben was gonna put a new door in. Put it all in black and white, this is what, how we want it done. Now you guys get to fight over what you're gonna charge us to do it bid wise.
I understand what you're saying, but basically, basically you're going by everything. I mean, is Ben gonna change his number that much, I mean, you know, lower it, raise it, I mean.
But, but that's not saying that we're, that's not, we might make the decision that we're gonna take the responsibility and they don't have to bid fire retardant carpet.
Yeah, I, I guess if you wanna, yeah, I guess if you wanna do that, I don't know.
I would try to get four bids too. I'd put it off till we have four bids for it, how we want it done. I don't know. You can't choose a bid, how can you choose a bid, because you're not comparing apples to apples.
But like I told you guys, it's not fair to Ben, it pisses me off when I go do a bid and I end up losing because mine's more, but they use the way cheaper material or the quality's not as good, that's what I'm saying, like I was. quality's not as good. That's what I'm saying, like, I was, I was just, it's not fair to Ben. Like, I was gonna pull my bid out, I wouldn't do that to him. I don't, I don't like any people do it to me. But then again, I mean, it's not either one of our fault, we didn't know exactly what council wanted.
And that's what I'm saying.
Basically, Jamie said, we need this corner fix over here, the, the door, the whole wall's coming apart. We need to do something with the counter. You figure out what you can do. You know, mine was tile, his is epoxy. Like, it's just, we need it like in detail, and that's exactly what people need to quote on there.
And that's what I'm saying, let the bids expire and put it out how we want it done. You know, maybe we decide on polished concrete floors well. Then maybe he has to get with Ben to contract him out.
Why do we have to wait for the bids to expire?
Well, we can reject both of them.
The thing is waiting sixty days, I mean, we, we need to do something quick. It's the only thing I didn't like about the sixty days. But I'm telling you guys, like, I'm just gonna go ahead and pull my bid out. Like, it's just not right for, not right for him.
Can we go ahead and just pull the bids, just reject them, and then just let council put in detail what they want, then re, re-put it out there for bids again?
I mean, that doesn't take any kind of action or anything. I guess what, what maybe, I mean, it's hard to hire a contractor right now. I mean, I don't know if you're gonna get anybody else other than, than the two you've got now. I don't know if you'd wanna ask them to, to amend their bids, to include or exclude certain things. It may be that you do this again and you just end up with one bid. I, I've been looking for somebody to do concrete work on my house for two months. It's just, everybody's busy everywhere.
I just know I'm not choosing either bid because they're not the same. I mean, I can't make a good decision and, and say, well, I'm not using Isai because Ben done it the right way and he never had it. I mean, they're not, they're not comparable. And it's not fair to him that we choose Ben's or we choose his and don't give Ben a shot at the same thing that he's expecting to do.
I don't like Isai. It's a conflict of interest. You know what the other guy's bid is. I don't think he can bid it anymore. I mean, it's not personal, but no matter what we say, I, I don't, I mean, which maybe it was a conflict of interest in, any, to begin with anyway, but it sure is now, in my opinion.
No, I mean, that's fine, but for future reference, we need to make sure we're on the same page, and tell the contractors exactly what to bid to, for future reference.
Yeah, I disagree.
So, I mean, I'll go ahead and I won't, I'll pull this bid and I won't bid on the WIT Center, but as a local contractor, like, it's also not right. I invest a lot into the community, so if you guys do what you gotta do.
I think we should set specs for what we want. I think that's, that's what we do because.
I mean, candidly, a lot of what you're considering specs, I mean, that's the first time I've heard that talked about, is only because you got his bid. Am I right? I mean, is there?
I, I just saw so much difference in the bids, that the quality is, and the quantity is not going to be the same period between the two bids. I mean, one is apples and one's oranges.
Yeah.
And over the last forty years, I think I've hired every electrician, every plumber, and every carpenter at Stafford, probably plenty can. And there's very few I didn't have to call back, that the work was done right the first time. And you just want this thing set up where everybody knows what you're getting.
None of that solves work's gonna get paid for, for sure, everybody knows.
That was my other concern, you know, I mean.
That's, I don't know, you're gonna pay.
We got fourteen thousand, so.
You can't pay for it out of a WIT Center budget, so unless you get the WIT Center come in on part of this, you know, it's kind of a moot point.
But I wanna find the funding, not fixing. I don't see not fixing it as not an option.
I, I think.
I agree, I agree with you, but we gotta find the funding. I mean, we're.
Well, that goes back to that budget we voted on in one night, that we all should be better educated on.
But the WIT Center has nothing to do with the budget, because it's its own money. We don't put money into it, we can only use what's gained off of it.
The budget is where all the rest of the money that we're gonna be paying for this comes from.
Well, right. But you only have very few limited options of pulling that money from. You can't pull it just from the street department.
I don't disagree.
I mean, you have to either do the one percent or a capital outlay project that allows you to pull it for that.
Can we use some of the sales tax revenue to help pay for it? Is that an option?
It's set up for, how was that set, John?
Anything, economic and any government, general fund items, I think is most worth.
I mean, I don't think you're probably gonna hear anybody complaining out of us using some of the money to help.
There's, there's an awful lot of young women pushing baby carriages to town, and they're going to want someplace to go, like a skating rink or something. And all of us have taken our kids there and roller skated there, and it's a, it's, it's a pretty good resource.
It is.
But I think council wanna do. Come up with sets, come up with sets of specs and re-bid it. I think that'd be the first place you go, and then we look out, we're gonna fund it.
I would just, I would talk to Ben and see what his, different carpet, what it costs.
He said we can put the non-fire retardant carpet in with a signature of a liability waiver. It's the way I understand it.
Would you sign off on it?
I didn't know that was a thing.
Would I put my name on it?
Yeah.
I don't know.
You got kids? You got buildings, you got vertical walls.
I would've put my name on it.
Do you have any reason to back that up, or you just say no? It has no, it, it's when all these years it has no sprinkler system, is that against the law?
No.
Okay.
Because here's the thing, as long as you don't have more than ninety-nine people in there, you're not required by law with sprinkler systems.
Two exits. No, more. Just two?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
One, but one in the northeast corner.
Yeah, no, I knew there was.
No, just two.
I'd just like to know what Ben's timeframe was, and then talk to the rec and see what they're willing to do, and go that route, but.
I'm okay with that too, I guess, I mean.
And you could ask Ben when you're asking his timeframe, whether it is for non-fire retardant, or if he has any suggestions to draw down that number, what would it be?
Have him come in and talk with you guys.
And he's available by phone if you would like me to call him. I told him around seven thirty. You know, nine fifteen's okay.
Yeah.
I do have to get blood in the morning. Can't eat after midnight.
You'll be getting hung just a little bit before midnight tonight.
Okay, so we want to, uh, we just want to.
Put it off.
Put it off the phone next meeting.
Yeah, we'll just check, see if they're willing at all, check them in.
Okay.
Email that to us if there's any updates for the next meeting.
All right. Okay, let's go on to executive sessions. We need ten minutes to executive session.
Oh, no, we got some new, new business.
Oh, my, my, yeah, my bad, excuse me. Uh, council has complaints.
So I sat in the other day with the supervisors and Jamie for just a little bit. Some of the issues that some of the supervisors have is council members calling them to report a problem in the city, you know, where something needs fixed or something needs done. And they forget about it because they're, they don't write it down or it's not documented somewhere. And so what they would like is for us as council members, if we take a complaint from a citizen, either refer them to the city office, or ourselves, call the city office, and let Jamie put it on a work order. So if it's on a work order and they don't do it, then we have documentation of it, rather than us.
Accountability now.
Rather than us telling them, calling, picking up phones, saying, this needs fixed, and it not getting fixed, it's your word against theirs. Maybe they forgot, maybe they went, well, I ain't doing it because he asked me to. I don't know what the question is to the answer, but that was the only thing that they seemed that, you know, and I'm, I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm just as guilty as anybody else at this table, because I do it all the time. I pick up the phone and call Jeff, or I call David, or I call Jason.
The other complaint that we had was opinions after council meetings. Um, when, when you make a, when you take a consensus of what you vote on, and the next day, guys are calling about wanting to change this, wanting to change this, and wanting to change this, it's not gonna happen. Um, we go by the quorum of what the council says on Tuesday night, not what one person says on Wednesday. So please don't call us. If you have something like Marshall said, call Jamie. Um, we'll get it taken care of. But opinions, separate opinions, uh, after you leave here, you're just like we are. You're just people. You can't vote by yourself. It takes a quorum to tell us to change something. So please don't eat our butts out. If you don't like something, please don't. Because for one thing, you don't have a right to. I mean, if you have an opinion about something, let the administrator know, and we'll work it out, because we'll use the chain of command to go down through it. So, um, you know, several times, we've had guys stopped, we've had guys called, uh, I don't want it done this way, I want this changed, I want this changed. But the council had voted one way on Tuesday night, and we'd like to see it kept that way.
While you guys are being reasonable, I mean, it's more reasonable. And I think that's the communication we need to have from here on out.
Well, we're all just, we're all just human, you know?
We need to stay communicated.
And if you decide, if you decide that you want a big yellow line down the middle of this street, and you do it on Tuesday night, and Wednesday you say, no, stop right here, I'm not going to. I'm gonna shoot that line clear to the highway, because that's what I've been told to do. So please, if you have something, please give it to Jamie. Um, she'll reel out, lay it out to us. But, uh, separate opinions after a decision's made, we're not gonna accept them. We might get fired for it, but we're not gonna accept them.
I think that works both ways too.
Oh, I think so, without a doubt.
You know, we had quite a confusion when you were on vacation on the chatting of First Street and the chatting of West Street.
You're exactly right.
And I've never, and I just wanna note it, I've never called any of you guys ever on your cell phones.
No, you haven't, and we appreciate it.
But, um, it goes both ways.
It does.
When we say we're gonna follow West Street, we're not gonna chat it.
And we apologize for that.
And then we're, we're not chatting two blocks left on First Street, and then we're chatted.
But I did take care of that as soon as I got back down and on. I did not know what happened at the time, but as soon as I got back, I did find out, and I went to the source and I took care of it.
That's right.
You know, and, and we gotta be that way.
Right.
We have to be that way.
And that, that is the point of the meeting, and that's.
So.
You know, more lines of communication and being more transparent and making sure that everyone is on the same page, so.
Cause we appreciate everyone, maybe, we really do. But we just don't like to be singled out for, you know, if we, if we do something on city time, uh, especially with me, I do zoning things, I do code things, I do that. And if they affect you, I'm sorry, it's not personal. It's not personal at all. But if you do something that's out of the line of what the code or the zoning says, I'm gonna cite you for it. Because, and like I say, it's just like Marshall said one day. You know, Marshall and I have been friends since he was a little boy, but if I need to fire you, it's not personal. It's because of the way things were done, and we feel the same way about here. We have rules too, so. And we're trying to follow them, that's what you pass to do, so. Anyway.
I think that, uh, the lines of communication just need to improve. I think that we need to have paperwork to hold everyone accountable for their positions. Um, council needs to remember that they are a legislative body only, um, and then we just move on from there. Moving on to the next thing, land bank.
Um, we got the deeds for the properties we purchased. I guess the only thing is, is when do you guys wanna set up a land bank meeting so that we can go inspect these properties and figure out what we're gonna do?
How about our council meeting?
Well, yeah, I mean, this is a pretty long council meeting anyway.
Do you guys wanna try to plan to do like a, a six o'clock meeting and look at them prior to the next council meeting? Yeah, I got three properties.
Three?
No, I mean, it was six, wasn't it?
Well, four. We got.
Two, three, four.
Three of our, of the same location.
Yeah, I thought it was one, one, three, three.
There's three, four.
I thought there was three in a row.
There's three houses in a row, it's two properties.
But either way, if we do it later on in the year, it's getting darker even sooner.
Well.
Ten minutes each house.
I don't think.
In three weeks, we can still do it at six o'clock.
I don't think that it's gonna take you all that long to make a decision on most of these houses that have things to be done.
I thought that about when you went and looked at the WIT Center too.
We're not tearing down a dilapidated building.
Six o'clock next meeting?
See, we'll just do a, just.
Where are we gonna meet, which one?
Same map that she printed before.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Where we're gonna meet.
Yeah, but which is?
Now, John, we don't actually have to.
Number one.
We can just do a, a straight land bank meeting, correct?
Uh, so what, what, what you ought to do is at the first house, go into, start your city council meeting, cause it's kinda nice coming back and being able to just continue. And then, um.
Recess.
Recess.
Recess into land bank.
Go into land bank, and then do your land bank.
And then close the land bank and then.
We would just do it, we would just do it at the first property.
You could just call land bank meeting.
And then just come here at seven.
And then come back here at seven if you wanna do it that way.
That's what we said last time.
Yeah. No, but Ben's how we're all on council, does that make it a problem?
Oh, they do have to, no, because you guys are all.
We're meeting as a land bank.
It's official land bank, yeah.
It's a land bank.
And it's an open meeting.
The land bank is at six o'clock, anybody can come.
You just have to do a.
Come here at seven o'clock.
Agenda.
That's what I understood.
Work for you guys. You have to do a land bank agenda like you would a council meeting agenda, and provide the notice and everything.
So we want to meet at six o'clock at the next meeting, which is, uh, what is it, November?
Three weeks. That's exciting. The fifth.
November fifth.
Oh, hey.
Election night.
Oh, it is.
Oh, my.
It is election night.
The tension's ran high.
Okay, and we wanted, we want this to be at six P M.
What, yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead, man.
No, um, I'm done.
Oh, I was just gonna ask, did we get the padlocks on that, speaking of the land bank and those houses, oh, did we get the padlocks on them doors, or on that one house that the doors were, uh, we were finding open?
The beam house.
On First Street?
Yeah.
I didn't know anything about it.
We don't know anything.
What's been going, what's been going on in there? I drove by that, um, that property several times and the.
I don't know if the wind's blowing it open, I don't know if somebody's going in there. I mean, I'm not seeing anything different in there. Uh, but if we can, if we can put a, uh, like what we did on that house over here for the antenna, if we can just do that padlock, there's some, either the wind's blowing it open or somebody's going in there. So if the guy that's the city owns it, um, yeah, then they have that liability, so I guess if we can, we can padlock. Cause I've gotten phone calls on it too, and gone over there and shut it, but it just comes open.
Who owns that property? Field Bean Property?
We did.
We do, okay.
Yeah, we did.
That's probably six o'clock.
I was like, wait a minute.
I, I guess while we're talking about it, I, I guess now would be the time to just have the city guys go secure all of them, make sure they're all secured.
That's what we were just talking about.
Cause I mean, we're gonna have to get into them, so if you gotta break the door and put a padlock on it, you guys can break the door and.
We'll leave it up to them guys.
So we can get into it.
They even have personal property in it or anything?
I think the beam house does.
Yeah, it did have.
Cause that's, they called, the, the city guys called me and said that they were afraid that people were going into that house, cause there was a little bit of suspicious activity.
Someone is interested in one of the properties.
Can I just buy a, a truckload of house?
No, I know, it's not that one.
You tell them guys, cause I'm not gonna be.
Steven here, you know, was a couple weeks ago, um, there was a board on the backside of the window, and it was up, and now it's down with broken glass. And the other night or the other morning, whatever, sounded like somebody was opening. Um, so we came in, see what we, you know, needed to do, whatever, um, like Steven notified you, um, and then the front door's open.
Yeah. So I mean, I just think we need to secure.
Open the end or?
But that's the thing, is I, I haven't caught anybody in there, uh, nothing like that, but I don't know if the wind's doing it.
Well, we are liable for them now, right?
But there wasn't any tenants in any of these houses.
No, no.
Somebody, it's not supposed to be there. Yeah, if we, well, then if there's not tenants in it, then who cares if there's personal property in it?
Well, it's more the fact that somebody goes in and gets injured.
No, I understand.
Lost your floor.
I don't really care what happens to the stuff in it, I don't want somebody in there.
Yeah.
So I mean, if we just.
I don't know anything about these houses, I'm gonna ask questions.
Yeah, I think we just need to padlock, break the doors in so we can get into them when we go look at them and. Yeah, I think we just need to padlock, break the doors in, so we can get into them, and we go look at them and.
Well, if you're worried about the liability part, just just put no trespassing signs on it, and not spend money on locks.
They could still be in tracking due, since there's still a kid wandering there. But even if you put the no trespassing, you're still gonna be liable, I mean, by Kansas law, you can't go onto any property that's not yours, but if, if somebody's jumping on somebody's trampoline and gets injured, and they're not even supposed to be on there, it's still gonna be the homeowner's responsibility, they're still gonna sue them and do that, so I just think by locking them up, we eliminate that problem. How are those deeds, do they come to the city, or do they come to the land bank?
I thought they had put them in my name.
Hope they did.
They should've come to the city.
Okay, so we get, we're.
City of Saint John.
The land bank, when we get back from touring the houses, can you guys stay in land bank, and then move to accept those properties into land bank, and we'll beat them to the city.
City of Saint John.
Okay.
So you just need to do that too.
So we'll just stay in the land bank.
Just come back in here, and then join me, make a motion.
I'll get with Jamie, and we'll just get it in agenda and get it out, how we're gonna do everything, where we're gonna start at.
Fantastic.
Okay. All right.
Fifty-five minutes of executive session.
Okay, we're cutting.
Don't let me, I can do most of mine in five.
Okay, we got a ten minute executive session for non-elected personnel, who you want in?
Hang on, let me bring it back on, which one?
Is that the one you added, man?
I need to put it towards the end if you need to.
So it doesn't really matter?
Put his at the bottom.
Okay, put that at the bottom.
That's where I wrote it, we're standing on.
So I can do mine in five, the top, A, I can do in five.
We can come back early.
Okay. We can't come out.
And let, I mean.
You still have to stay that whole time. You can do it in five?
I can, can you?
Let's do it.
Okay, got a five minute, uh, executive session to discuss possible hires, say administrator, who do you want in there?
Uh, everyone at the table.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, I got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Can we let these guys go home?
Yeah.
For any of us to be here?
No.
Oh, David.
David will need to stay.
Motion carries, we resume at nine thirty-six.
And the chief has to sit.
All this meeting back to order, okay.
I would make a motion that we hire Joyce Miller on an as-needed basis, at fourteen dollars an hour.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor? Motion carries. Have a ten minute, uh, executive session to discuss attorney-client privilege, to review memorandum of, uh, city attorney.
Okay, so I put it in as a, as an executive session, because on the memorandum, it says, it's not subject to open record.
Which one?
Comp time.
Oh, I didn't want to burn that one, I didn't.
I have copies printed out, don't worry, I'm on top of it. Do you need?
No, I'm kidding.
Does it need to be ten?
It, it, it really, I don't, I think I'm gonna be asked questions about it, I'm not sure that, that I know exactly what the issue is, so.
Let everybody at the table?
So moved.
You have a motion in a second, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries, four one, we'll resume at nine forty-seven.
Then they fired him, and he was like, oh, what about the napkin?
Call this meeting back to order, having taken no action, we will table the discussion till next meeting, or after. And another, have a ten minute executive session to discuss employee evaluation, city administrator.
Do you need ten minutes?
Do we need ten minutes?
Five will do it.
Five?
Five minutes.
To include?
Everyone in here.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor? Motion carries, we will resume at fifty-one.
I can work this off.
Call this meeting back to order.
I'd make a motion to increase Jason White's pay from twenty-three eleven to twenty-three eighty.
Have a motion on the table, have a second. Motion in a second, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next order of business, you have a five minute, employee, excuse me, uh, executive session uh, to discuss employee public work supervisor.
Non-elected personnel?
Non-elected personnel, to include?
Joe.
Five minutes?
Oh, we got five minutes?
Yeah.
Just Jeff?
Jeff, David.
Yeah.
And you guys.
Everybody.
Everybody except for Alan.
So moved.
They're gonna get that baby off.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, we'll resume at fifty-seven after. Call this meeting back to order.
Did you say we didn't need a motion?
Yeah, yeah, and he, and he's gonna want a motion anyways, so it's.
I'd make a motion that we allow David Heller to build a house or reside outside of the city limits of Saint John, approximately three and a half to four miles.
Second. Have a motion in a second, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you guys. Thank you very much.
Okay, have a ten minute dig, executive session to discuss, uh, possible hire, chief, who you want in here?
Uh, just council, and I think five minutes will be fine.
Five minutes.
I guess we're done now, aren't we?
Counsel, everybody at the table?
Oh, then we'll go for ten, man, if they're leaving, we'll.
See you, John. Hold the fork now.
Everybody at the table? So moved.
Okay, I have a motion, I got a second? Okay, motion in a second, all in favor? Motion carries, we will resume at ten oh-two. Call this meeting back to order, uh, we need an additional five minutes.
Yeah, well, is that good for the council, five minutes, I guess, fine.
Okay, five minutes, uh, executive session, uh, to discuss a possible new hire police department. Can you get a motion?
So moved.
Motion in a second, all in favor? Motion carries, uh, we will resume at, uh, ten fif, uh, ten oh-eight.
I'm totally jealous.
Okay, call this meeting back to order, do I get a motion?
I'd make a motion to allow Alan to hire the applicant that we reviewed at thirteen dollars an hour, pending the interview.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor? Motion carries.
I thought you said fourteen. If you said thirteen, I thought you were up to four.
Well, we discussed that.
We agreed as council.
Okay.
I didn't have to write it down, I had it right here in the room.
Okay, got one last, uh, ten minute executive session for non-elected personnel, um, who'd you want? Everyone in here?
Everybody at the table.
Everyone at the table. Okay, we've got, that's a motion, okay, I have a motion, okay, we got motion in a second, all in favor? Motion carries, we'll resume at, uh, ten oh-nine, excuse me, ten nineteen. This meeting's back to order, having taken no.
No action taken at this time?
Yeah, that, um, ask for motion to adjourn.
I've had so much fun, I don't wanna get out of here and say it.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor? Motion carries.